Okay, well, good evening, everyone. We are going to call this meeting to order. It is 5:30. And Ms. Rosales Medina, will you lead us in the pledge?
I surely will. Okay, everyone, stand up. Place your right hand over your heart. And ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. And at this time, we'll get back to my agenda. We will move now to 1.3, approval of the agenda.
So move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. If there's no discussion or nothing to pull from Cabinet, Dr. Hill?
Thank you, Madam President, Dr. Rogers. You know, with everything that's...
Your vote. This is your vote, Dr. Hill.
Oh, I thought I was ready to read.
I know you are. Okay, Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Pump your brakes, Dr. Hill. Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Abios?
Aye.
And Dr. Daddy Rogers, aye. Motion carried. All right. We are now moving to 1.4 inspirational message, and we all know that she is ready. So, Dr. Hill, take it away.
Thank you, I am ready. You can begin.
Uh-oh, did you hit mute? You hit mute. You're on mute.
All right. So, I want to do... Do you realize the influence you have? That's the topic of today's inspiration. And this was written by an author in 2011, and I just added to it. But are you guilty of holding someone back from accomplishing, or doing, or developing as they should, or could? Good question, isn't it? Maybe you have been in a role that influences other people, and your actions and behaviors are stopping someone from being the person they can be. Or maybe you are influencing them to the point where they question their own ability to succeed. Sometimes, we are our own worst enemy in that we can hold ourselves back from accomplishing what we should and being guilty of undermining our own worth to the organization we work for. But we can also adversely affect those around us, whether we choose to act like uncaring people, or think we know everything, or by setting unrealistic expectations, or by refusing to encourage others as if a positive remark would belittle our own status. So my message to you tonight is for all stakeholders, including, and there are many, students, parents, and all other caregivers, neighbors, community leaders, bus drivers, custodians, cafeteria workers, maintenance personnel, aides, classroom assistants, all classified workers, teachers, all administrators and managers, cabinet members, superintendent, assistant superintendent, and all the people that I missed. And of course, seven school board members. It may be a wise notion that we all look in the mirror from time to time to see what we are really like. Never let it be said that any of us will allow ourselves to be the one who prevented hope from happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hill, for that inspiration. And we will now move to 2.1. I believe we do have comments. Um, if, uh... This is Cunningham. Do we have comments?
Yes, we do, President Rogers.
Thank you so much. And then, Dr. Wyatt, if you would get prepared to read 2.1, recognition of LGBTQIA+ Pride Month. Thank you. We are ready for our comments.
Okay, um, I'll call the first one. It is Kathleen Brennan. If you're available, please unmute.
Is she there?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thank you, guys. And once again, I just want to thank you guys, the board, in advance for your time allowing me to speak tonight. I just... I felt compelled to speak in actual support of this recognition. In 2016, there were over 200 laws that were passed at the state and federal level to allow discrimination against the LGBTQIA+ community. That being said, I don't think I need to remind any of you what happened in 2016 at the Pulse nightclub. Nearly 50 people were killed that are the LGBTQI+ community. Clearly, elections have consequences. We all know this. That being said, I think it's time to have this kind of recognition and education in the schools. Studies have shown time and time again. Carl Niss, who today came out and felt defensive player. And the reason he came out is because studies show that one, just one accepting adult will lower a youth suicide chances by 45, 40%. I think that this is an appropriate place to have that discussion. I think it's important to show these kids that they are accepted, that they are valued, and they can be safe at school. You know, of course, we can't mandate tolerance and acceptance, but we can have these recognitions and these policies in place. By doing so, that will shift attitudes eventually. It's also shown that. And I just want to applaud you guys for even having this recognition out there and taking this step forward. And I just hope to see this come to fruition. And again, I just want to thank you guys so much for always being, you know, the front leaders of everything, it seems like, in Southern California. But thank you again for your time, and I hope to see this come to fruition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Jennifer Cardenas. If you're available, please unmute.
Jennifer, are you on the line?
Okay, I'm told that she's not there, so I'll go ahead and move on. Our next speaker is Maggie Hawkins. If you're available, please unmute.
Thank you. It's good to see you all this evening. Thank you. I am Maggie Hawkins and a long-term member of the Inland County's LGBTQIA+ community. I'm also a lecturer in public health with the CSU system. Over the years, I have worked with many, many young people who are students and alum who are with the San Bernardino City Unified Schools. I have had a long-term association with Rainbow Pride Youth Alliance in four short periods. Several years ago, was director in sight, directly dealt with schools and families in that capacity on issues around supporting LGBTQIA+ students. School is an important environment for all youth, but particularly for LGBTQIA+ youth. It can be a source of great terror in their lives, and it can also be a source of great support. Again, I've seen many teachers and school clubs and activities often that were essential sources of not only safety, but critical life-saving resources and community for our young people. So I thank the board, and I especially thank Council Board Member, excuse me, Medina for publicly acknowledging the school district's role in supporting the lives of our young people and their families, because many times their families may not come to talk to you. And they're there. And they're part of the district, and it's good that they're acknowledged. And thank you for this Pride Month recognition. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tillman, did you have a clarifying on the comment? The person that spoke before, or the person that just spoke?
No, I just wanted to make a statement before we read the resolution.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Okay, Ms. Cunningham, go ahead.
Okay, our next speaker is Reverend Benita Ramsey. If you're available, please unmute.
Benita, are you here?
Okay, I'm just being told that they are not here, so I'll go ahead and move on. The next one is Javier Hernandez. If you're available, please unmute. Okay, they're not here either. I'll go ahead and go. Angie Valderras, if you're available?
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, I have my camera off because I'm a little shy. No, just kidding, my camera's broken. Good evening, San Bernardino Board Members. What a great day it is. I want to start off by thank you for this Pride proclamation and doing the right thing in order to keep all our children safe. My name is Angie Valderras. I'm a community organizer and alumni of Cajon High School. So, Pride Proclamation Day presented today. Thank you. This is not only a step towards equality, equity, and inclusion for all our children, but a statement in San Bernardino schools that we practice love here, not hate. And though there's a lot of work to be done, thank you for doing what's right for the sake of our children's safety. I can't help but get emotional because when I was going through the school system here in San Bernardino, there was no GSA. There was none of this. So, a lot of us had to live double lives, and school was our only safe haven. Where sometimes, this is the only place youth and even staff members could be themselves. So, this is how important it is because some people can't live their true selves at home because it could be life and death for some folks. So I want to thank you all for the step in the right direction. But like I always say, let's not talk about it. Let's be about it. There's still a lot of work to be done and things to do, but with love, listening, respect, and learning from each other, we will get through this. We will do this and create a safe community for all. I'd like to take the time also to thank board members who have stood by the LGBT community, not just during Pride Month, when it's the thing to do, but all the time. And thanks to all the board members and staff for making sure that no matter what your belief is, that the child comes first. And I thank you. And we're going to continue the work, and I'm here with any resources, a long-term organizer in the LGBTQ community and so forth. So, let's continue to build a beautiful San Bernardino and a safe space for all of our children and our staff, our community, and let's keep thriving. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. Next up, Ms...
Okay, next up is Amber Kirkpatrick. Are you available?
Okay. Hello, everybody. Sorry, I was trying to unmute, and for some reason, it wasn't allowing me. My name is Lucille. I'm an organizer with ICUC. But actually, Amber was not able to be on, like, on for the life comment, but they did ask me if I could read the comment, public comment that they wrote. So I'm going to go ahead and do that. My name is Amber Kirkpatrick. My pronouns are she, her, and they, them. I just recently graduated from Cajon High School, and I am part of ICUC and the Inland Empire Prism Collective. I am advocating for the safety of students within SBCUSD and for everyone within our schools. LGBTQ students should be allowed to be whoever they are and just be accepted for it. This is important to me because when I was a freshman, I had teachers that were apprehensive about the LGBTQ community. There should be more diverse representation at all levels of our education as well as within the school board, such as Board Member Abigail Medina, who does a great job at advocating for us as LGBTQ students. My experience within the school district is that there is inconsistency when it comes to the way teachers treat LGBTQ issues. Some teachers completely refuse to acknowledge us. I want to make sure that everyone within the school district feels safe in their own schools, that they feel included in events, sports, et cetera. It is important that non-binary students feel comfortable as they navigate their identities on campus and that they have the support and representation they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucille.
Okay, our next speaker is Scarlett Juarez. Scarlett, if you're available?
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so, hi, my name is Scarlett Juarez. I just graduated from Cajon High School, and I'm a youth leader with ICUC and Inland Empire Prism Collective. During my time at Cajon, I was co-president of the GSA club on my school campus. That means that for years, I was helping co-lead the only truly safe space that exists for LGBTQ students at the school. It is necessary for the school district to pass a resolution in support of LGBTQ students and our identities because it is important for us to feel safe while navigating our education. For some of the experiences my peers have shared with me during my times as GSA president, there are teachers and school admin who aren't supportive of our LGBTQ identities and actively make us feel unsafe. Passing a resolution is the first step in making sure LGBTQ students know we're supported within the district. It is the bare minimum of what the school district should do to make sure we are supported as students. Making this type of statement would help create and enforce a much-needed culture that puts the needs of LGBTQ students at the forefront and would make it so safe spaces go beyond only those treated by us as students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Leonardo Pinalosa. If you're available, please unmute.
Hello. Hi, my name is Leonardo. I use pronouns he, him, his. And I am an incoming junior at San Bernardino High School, as well as a leader with ICUC and IE Prism Collective. And I believe that passing a Pride resolution is essential because creating policies and initiatives that encourage LGBTQIA+ education and awareness is important. This can help minimize incidents of the LGBTQIA+ people being embraced and bullied, as well as promote an atmosphere where students can feel safe, embracing and expressing their sexual orientation and gender identity. It is your responsibility to ensure that every student obtains a well-rounded education that fulfills all of their academic, social, and emotional requirements, regardless of their gender identity, gender expression, or sexual orientation. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Sabrina Avavalo. Saying that right? If you're available?
Can you hear me? Can you guys hear me?
Sabrina, you're a little low.
Is this better?
A little bit. Go ahead and go.
Okay, my name's Sabrina Avavalo. My pronouns are she, her. I'm a junior at Cajon High School, and I am the GSA treasurer. The Pride Resolution is important to me because when I came out, I lost, like, basically half my family, my dad. And when I went to school, it helped me a lot because I have people there to support me. And if I knew, like, more people supported me at the school, then I'd make me feel more happy. And knowing that more LGBTQIA+ students would get help at school, be able to count, to talk to our counselors and principals, knowing that you won't get discriminated by or be called over dramatic or doing it for attention. And that's it.
Sabrina, are you still there?
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, you're very, very faint.
Did you hear everything I said, though?
The be... Just a little bit. We did hear a little bit of the beginning.
I heard everything. I turned my speakers up.
Okay, I turned mine up. I still couldn't hear. That's what I was doing.
I was able to hear as well.
Did you? Okay. Okay, is she... Did she finish?
She finished, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Sabrina.
Okay, our next speaker is Lupe Dolan. If you're available?
Good afternoon. My name is Lupe Dolan. My pronouns are she, her, and I'm an incoming junior at Pacific High School, as well as a youth leader with ICUC and Inland Empire Prism Collective. I am here in support of the Pride Resolution for LGBTQ students in recognizing June as Pride Month. LGBTQ students are my classmates, friends, and people I interact with every day, and they deserve respect and support in school and beyond. It's important to support and respect everyone's identities, especially in schools where we want to feel safe and accepted so everyone has a chance to thrive and grow in their schools and become their best selves so they can create the future they want. As an ally to my LGBTQ peers, I believe that the school district has a responsibility to uplift LGBTQ education and create avenues where we learn about these identities as students, teachers, and admin. Unfortunately, it is a reality that my LGBTQ peers experience discrimination on school campuses. For the safety of all students, the school district leadership should put their morals into action by making sure that everyone within all schools is receiving LGBTQ learning that would help make students feel safe.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Kalani Rodriguez. If you're available, please unmute.
Um, hello. Good afternoon. My name is Kalani Rodriguez. I use she, her, they, them pronouns, and I am a recent graduate of Cajon's class of 2021. I am also a former GSA member who assisted in the virtual LGBTQ+ education event last year. As an LGBTQ+ youth, the lack of representation in media and real-life spaces is apparent to me and my fellow queers. The Pride Resolution is a conversation that needs to be had where students can feel safer. As board members, the priorities are to the students, staff, and guardians of your schools. San Bernardino is a diverse community and should be encouraged to educate yourselves on the many communities. Education is so very important, and by acting on this, it will be made apparent to the people. To be seen and heard can make a difference to struggling teens, uneducated parents, and teachers, not knowing where to make the next move to better their students. It is not heard of enough, and when people are left in the dark, it can lead to harmful decision-making. More stress and divided communities is something we need less of. By including and acknowledging our community, it can lead to everyone discussing future needs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, Javier Hernandez. Javier, if you're available, please unmute.
Yes, hello, everyone. My name is Javier Hernandez. I'm the Executive Director of the Inland Coalition for Immigrant Justice. I'm calling also in support of Agenda Item 2.1, recognition of LGBTQIA+. Pride Month, that's an organization that works with immigrant communities throughout the Inland Empire. We also understand the intersections of intersections and intersectionalities of the multiple identities of the communities that we work for and who we are as people, right? So as an immigrant, as a queer immigrant, this is something that I support. And our coalition of over 50 organizations based in the Inland Empire are also standing proud to support this Agenda item. Thank you for your leadership on this, and we look forward to working with you all again in the future.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Zaraya Smith. If you're available, please unmute.
Hello, my name is Zaraya Smith. I use she, her pronouns, and I am a leader with ICUC and Inland Empire Prism Collective. I'm here today advocating for SBCSUSD to pass a Pride Resolution in support of LGBTQ students throughout the district. I believe this is very important because students everywhere deserve to feel safe on their school campuses and a Pride Resolution that acknowledges the struggles that LGBT students face on a daily basis. It's the bare minimum of what the school district should be doing for our vulnerable student population. As a school board, you have a responsibility to implement solutions and programs that benefit students struggling on your school campuses. LGBTQ students are rarely given a voice in their experience and concerns, so often make it past their immediate support networks. This is harmful for LGBTQ students everywhere, and it is your responsibility to make sure the culture changes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Louis Luna. If you're available?
Hello, everyone. I'm Louis Luna. I go by he/him pronouns. And I'm a senior at Cajon High School now, and I am going into my fourth year being the president of the GSA there. Before I start any of my comments, I'd want to say my true appreciation to the school board for making a motion like this. It really shows your support for the queer community and shows that times are evolving, and we're moving forward, especially in these unprecedented and historical times that we've never predicted. But now going into my statement. As a queer student in San Bernardino, my relationship with schools have always been very rocky, whether it was the bullying in elementary or middle school that often made me believe that other students knew I was gay before I did myself, or it was high school when I found a place that I was accepted, loved, and by some students, but also pushed away and called slurs by others. In middle school, I'd often find myself scared to go to... So scared to go to PE because I knew I would hear a slur or hear someone tell me that I wasn't right to be alive Scared to go to, scared to go to PE because I knew I would hear a slur or hear someone tell me that I wasn't right to be alive. Or I wasn't right to be here. And when it came to high school, it was teachers like Ms. Corona set the Spanish class. I'm a freshman NYPD Spanish class. At Cajon High School who made me feel loved and acceptance no matter how many. How many mistakes I made on the test or how many days I was absent. She always made me feel welcome and it's teachers like that that I really appreciate. But on the other hand, there were also instances where I felt neglected by other students. Or put off by other teachers because I didn't feel welcomed and I didn't feel like I mattered because of the sentiments I was receiving from them. So just to hear a motion like this that states clear support to the queer community is amazing for me. And I highly, highly appreciate it again. And when it comes to school, oh, I'm so sorry, just one more thing. And when it comes to school, school is often a safe haven for many queer students. Whether it's those like myself who lost some family during coming out periods, or it's those who may come from abusive homes, or even those who may not have a home. School can be the safe haven for all students, no matter who they are, and it should be that way. And once this motion is passed, I definitely can see that more queer students will feel more comfortable as they see the school district is on their side. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Cal Cortez. If you're available, please unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hello and good evening to everyone here. My name is Cal and I go by they/them pronouns. I'm currently enrolled at middle, college, high school, but during my freshman year, I attended Cajon. At Cajon, I was a part of the GSA and presented at their district-wide LGBTQ event where we discussed queer education. I'm also a youth leader with ICUC and the Inland Empire Prison Collective. Identifying as a part of the LGBTQ community is something that I have never doubted, but those around me have. There's been constant questioning about if we as individuals even exist and hearing people discuss our community. As if it's something that can be brushed off is very damaging. A pride resolution that lets us feel that we are acknowledged and seen as real people would be helpful to all the students that do not feel welcomed or comfortable in their own classrooms. One might think it does not matter and that school is not about discussing sexualities, but this ideology becomes harmful when students are subject to bullying. And homophobic comments from other students. Having teachers that are comfortable with the LGBTQ community. And having a school district that lets queer youth know they are respected is something we want for every child. The discussions surrounding LGBTQ should not be considered taboo. Adults heavily influence the children around them and with discussions about queer communities. Teachers can play a huge part in helping students develop an accepting mindset. There is no reason not to respect any other human because of their identity. Thank you for listening and allowing us a space to share our thoughts.
Thank you.
Okay, our next uh speaker is Erica Ruiz. If you're available, please unmute.
Um, hi, actually, um so I do LGBTQ youth organizing with ICUC and Inland Empire Prison Collective. But we have one youth um that we weren't able to get on the list. Um, and so I'm wondering if we could pass it to Raina who worked really hard on their testimony.
Oh, hi, everyone. My name is Raina Thing. My pronouns are she, they. I'm a junior at Cajon High School where I've been attending the GSA club. I think it's important to pass a pride resolution because our school are small communities. That prepare us for the larger world and there should be a culture of respecting LGBTQ students. By creating opportunities for learning about our identities and pronouns. Our schools should celebrate diversity, which means that LGBTQ students should be uplifted as part of that diversity. As a student, I wish that I had had access to information and support around LGBTQ identities at a younger age because. It would have helped me as I was figuring out my sexuality. I know what it's like to struggle because of the lack of recognition that LGBTQ students get at school. Having a designated Pride Month would help uplift the resources and communities that already exist within the school district. I mean, it's common sense that LGBTQ students should be respected in our identities. Passing a pride resolution would be beneficial for our mental and emotional health because it would help us feel more comfortable. And safe being ourselves at school where we spend most of our time learning and trying to build community with each other. That's it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Erica, did you need to make a comment too?
Um, if there's space for it, that'd be nice.
Go ahead, you're on the list.
Oh, okay, thank you. Um, my name is Erica Ruiz. I use they/them pronouns. Um, as I just stated, um I'm the LGBTQ youth organizer for ICUC and Inland Empire Prison Collective. Um, as well as an alum from San Bernardino High School. Um, through my work, I've sat with and have talked to LGBTQ students and allied students from various high school campuses within the school district. Across the board, um in talking to students. They have echoed the same narratives of feeling like they aren't adequately supported by teachers and admin. Who will sometimes disregard or enact microaggressions against LGBTQ students. Um, trans and non-binary students are also constantly misgendered by their teachers and their peers. Students across the sexuality spectrum have their sexualities questioned or treated as a joke. And don't receive the comprehensive sex education that they deserve. LGBTQ students feel like they don't have safe spaces on their campuses. Other than the communities they build amongst themselves as peers and the few teachers that have proven they care about their queer students. LGBTQ students often feel like they have to be the ones to educate teachers, admin, and other students on their identities. And they carry the intellectual and emotional labor that comes with trying to convince the people around them that their identities are valid. Um, this is unacceptable. Schools should inherently be places of safety for marginalized students. Where they are given the tools to understand who they are as people. Youth should not have to educate the adults around them, much less tolerate discrimination from them. Passing a pride resolution that uplifts what LGBTQ youth experience is only the first step. To ensuring that schools throughout the district are places to actively engage communities in learning about LGBTQ issues. And being effective allies to the LGBTQ students on these campuses. There should be more than this, but students on school campuses feel left out of decisions that directly affect them. And it recreates a culture where they don't feel supported. I'm genuinely really glad that the conversation on passing a pride resolution has been brought to the school board. Um, I also want to give a big thanks to Abigail, who I know is a constant advocate for LGBTQ students. Um, this is so crucial, um but I also want to challenge you to please think beyond this. And provide LGBTQ students with the support that they deserve. Um, so thank you so much. Um, and we can pass it along.
Thank you.
Okay, and our last public speaker is Christian Flores. If you're available, please unmute.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Christian Flores. I use he/him pronouns. I'm a San Bernardino resident, ICUC housing organizer. SB Gen Now member and former San Bernardino City Unified School District alumni and three-year guest teacher. I'm supporting ICUC's LGBTQ youth and advocating for the approval of Agenda Item two point one, a Pride Month resolution. This is important because re- re- respect of existence and representation of our queer community within a diversity of culture. Matters to all students experiencing growth of understanding and educational, mental, and emotional empowerment. Should there come a time when I have my own children, a respecting and recognizing environment that breathes acceptance and understanding and supports them. Is where I would want them to be. It would not only be beneficial, but crucial for youth and students to be recognized and represented among their peers. Especially when they are from homes where their gender identity and expression and sexualities are not accepted. LGBTQ youth and young adults have significant rates of homelessness in comparison to their cisgendered peers. Schools being the environment where a significant portion of a student's waking lives is lived. It is of the utmost importance for LGBTQ youth to have access to accepting spaces. Where they are able to freely exist authentically as the individuals they are navigating the world as. Thank you for your time and leadership and hopefully compassion.
Thank you. And Mrs. Cunningham, you said that was the last co- uh comment?
Yes, that's the last one for this item.
All right, then board, we will have the reading of the resolution and we'll vote and then. If there's a discussion, we can, we can do that then. All right, we're ready. Dr. Wyatt.
Thank you, Madam President. Be my pleasure. Can you hear me well?
And you're a little low too, but I don't know if it's my thing, but just a little low.
All right, let me, let me get a little bit closer there. How's that?
Okay, that's better.
All right, my volume's at a hundred percent, so we'll see.
Mine too, yeah.
All right, uh recognition of LGBTQIA plus Pride Month. Whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer slash questioning, intersex, asexual, and other youth and adults. Who are exploring or expressing their sexual orientation and gender identity have the same right to attend school in a safe environment. Free of harassment, bullying, and discrimination and. Whereas the LGBTQIA plus youth are more likely to experience mental health issues, to drop out of school. And to attempt suicide than their non-LGBTQIA plus peers and. Whereas policies and programs that promote education and awareness of LGBTQIA plus issues can reduce incidents of harassment. And bullying of LGBTQIA plus individuals and create an environment where every student can feel comfortable. Embracing and expressing their sexual orientation and gender identity and. Whereas the Samuel City Unified School District is committed to ensuring that every student, regardless of their gender identity, gender expression, sexual orientation. Or biological sex characteristics receives a well-rounded education that meets all of their academic, social, and emotional needs. And whereas the LGBTQIA plus community has identified June as a time to come together in celebration of their diversity. Inclusion and impact within the greater world community and within the LGBTQIA plus community. Therefore being resolved that the Board of Education of the Samuel City Unified School District. Joins others around the state and nation in recognizing June twenty twenty one as LGBTQIA plus Pride Month. And encourages district teachers to promote learning activities that encourage students to reflect on the many notable contributions. That LGBTQIA plus individuals have made to California and the United States. So.
The move second?
All right, it's been moved and second. Is there a discussion and I can go in the order, go back to, I think, Mr. Tillman. You have a comment and then um Ms. uh Rosales Medina and then Dr. Flores.
Yeah, first I wanted to uh thank Dr. Flores and uh Ms. Medina for uh leading this charge to have this resolution. Uh, I don't know if it was the beginning of, but I know we're at a graduation and Dr. Flores showed a a flag of. Of a presentation, Instagram, uh uh picture from Riverside Unified School District. And I think that started the conversation about making sure that we recognize a Pride Month and Pride Month. That was important, right? This is still Pride Month. And actually, um it's it's the right time of Pride Month because I didn't know. Until I heard a presentation from a, in a classroom today about the nineteen sixty nine Stonewall. Riots that took place on June twenty eighth, and it was the impetus for pride that happened in New York. And it's an interesting story and I heard a teacher um give the lesson to students and the students having positive feedback. But I think that's what makes the difference to create a more safe environment for our students and even adults. The more we talk about it and 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 normalize and realize that um everyone deserves. To be respected as an individual. That's the key and be loved for it uh also. Then I want to thank the staff because I said two weeks ago at the last board meeting that our staff is great at writing resolutions. And somehow they come up with the perfect wording. And I think they did the same thing again on this resolution. So it's a resolution that uh. Uh, I think we all can be proud of. And I agree with the some of the earlier speakers. Uh, this is is just one step. But I I I do feel that our district has been supportive of the uh LGBTQIA uh plus community. And we will continue to be. And uh if people in the community um uh realize there are issues. Uh, feel free to contact us. We can always do more and we can always do better. And with that, I want to thank the uh staff and Dr. Flores and Ms. Medina for leading this. Thank you.
And next up is Dr. Flores.
I think Ms. Medina is before me, Madam President.
Oh, I'm sorry. And I said that earlier.
Yeah, that's okay. So first of all, I want to say thank you also to everyone that came on board. To speak to all the organizers. I know there was a few uh individuals that are part of the the Sierra Club, Teamsters, ICUC Youth. Uh, I, you know, I can't thank you enough. There's also I I ICIJ. I can't thank you enough because it was important to hear from the community. It was also important to hear from the students themselves, both former and current students. And and the struggles. Thank you for sharing your stories. All of this is important for us to. Take a moment and really grasp how important it is to make sure all students are feeling safe. And uh being out for the past uh almost four years now, I think it's important that we do have true representation across the board. I am so grateful for the stories that were mentioned about the teachers. That were the way for them um to feel safe and to come back to school and making sure that they were still motivated and encouraged. While we still have environments where um students are becoming homeless because their parents are kicking them out the moment that they say that they're out. Um, there are students that are being beaten and so forth. I mean, uh, there's a lot of issues that still needs to be done. But I am glad and I appreciate the board, the entire board for their support um in this. And Mr. Tillman, thank you so much for sharing those words as well. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Flores.
Uh, I'm I'm very thankful as well. I thank you, Mr. Tillman and Ms. Medina and the rest of the board. Uh, for supporting this as well. And also, it's very important, as all our speakers have spoken, that we respect each other. And that we lovingly, um, you know, embrace each other's choices. And also protect our students and like many of our LGBTQ uh speakers uh said, we need to support you. In many ways, and I hope that we can do it and you will let us know how to do it. Um, and so forth, but like everyone said, Angie said it, uh it's a beginning, it's a a beginning. Um, and that's um evolved towards it. And I like to also say that the indigenous people. Call um um gay people uh two-spirited. And it's a blessing to be uh two spirits. So um I think that um. We have to honor every and each one of us uh in our our differences and our similarities. So um. Thank you to all the speakers. Thank you to the staff for um for um. You know, uh finding the the words to to support our LGBTQ. Thank you.
All right, and Ms. Vios?
Yes, hi, good evening. Can you guys hear me okay? Great. So um I just want to start off by saying it is really nice to be back and see you all. Um, as you know, I unfortunately was not able to log into the last June eighth meeting due to connectivity issues, but I did watch the meeting later. Uh, via YouTube and I want to also express my support for uh this resolution as well as um to thank. Board member Medina, Dr. Flores, and um the community members that have come out tonight uh to provide their public um. Comments and support of the resolution. Um, like I said, I think that this is a uh really important resolution. Um, i- it's another area that really intersects with um the other uh. Areas that our community faces, right, as minority groups. This is just another, one of those layers that oftentimes is not spoken about. Um, and really needs to um be on the forefront of of uh to for us to look out for and. Make sure that we are providing trainings to our school staff and and just really providing s- safe spaces. Um, for for this par- particular um group of 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 students and staff and um just community members. So again, just wanted to say that I support it as well and it's really good to see you all tonight.
Thank you. So I'm double checking the chat. All right, thank you again, our board members for your comments and definitely we want to certainly thank. All of our students and community that came out. Many of you all I know and have been in meetings with and. And also encourage you to join our subcommittee, our LGBTQ subcommittee for the county. So. Good to see you all and without any further discussion, I'm going to go ahead and take the vote. Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios?
Aye.
And Dr. Dottie Rogers, aye. Motion carried. Thank you all so much. And now, get back to my agenda. We are at three point one uh closed session. Is there any public comments, Ms. Cunningham?
No, there are none.
There are none, okay. Three point two, we're gonna adjourn to closed session and so for our viewing audience. Uh, we will be back shortly, but we also want to encourage you that during the intermission. We're going to be playing the video of our and honoring our retirees again. If you didn't get a chance to see it. You will get an opportunity to see it while we're at closed session. All right, board members, let's log off and we'll see you in closed session.
Good afternoon and welcome to our annual awards program. On behalf of the Board of Education and Superintendent Doc Irvin. We want to express our gratitude to all of the dedicated, classified, and certified employees. Who make hope happen across the San Bernardino City Unified School District. Regardless of your position or title, it's your hard work and commitment to our students that makes us a strong district. Where students are learning, achieving, and succeeding. We appreciate all of you and we are pleased to host this employee appreciation reception in your honor. It gives me great pleasure to present the Board of Education's twenty twenty Crystal Apple Awards. For exemplary service to ten individuals who represent the many outstanding employees in our district. These ten passionate employees deserve some extra praise because we held off on honoring them last year due to the pandemic and stay-at-home orders. We will start with our certified and classified manager recipients. The certified manager Crystal Apple Award goes to Tommy Archuleta, principal of Hillside University Demonstration School. Tommy leads an award-winning school that has garnered praise from the National Center for Urban School Transformation for its high academic performance. Congratulations, Tommy, and thank you for making hope happen. Anthony Morris, mobile maintenance team supervisor in the Maintenance and Operations Department, is the winner of the Classified Manager Crystal Apple Award. Anthony works diligently to ensure that our campuses and administrative offices are in top shape. He is instrumental in helping our campuses prepare for and successfully comply with the Williams case. Please join me in a round of applause as we present Anthony Morris with the twenty twenty Crystal Apple Award. Our first certified employee to receive the twenty twenty Crystal Apple Award is Parkside Elementary Teacher Emily Brown Parker. Emily truly cares for her students and she uses her skills to evaluate the best way to reach each individual student. Her classroom is a warm, welcoming environment. Emily, thank you for caring for the students you teach. You have certainly earned this Crystal Apple. Our next honoree is Dr. Susan Clulley Barkdahl, who teaches at North Verdumont Elementary. Susan has earned many accolades at the city, county, state and international level for her exemplary teaching practices and her passion for helping students. Susan's never ceasing drive to improve her school site has raised nearly a million dollars in grants in the STEM fields. She aspires daily to instill hope for every child. Let's hear it for Dr. Clulley Barkdahl. Our next Crystal Apple Honoree is Hunt Elementary Second Grade Teacher Julie Freeland. Julie is a consummate teacher who brings a "we can make this happen" attitude that is contagious among students and staff. As a grade-level leader, Julie assists fellow second-grade teachers so they can effectively teach their students. For her dedication to the children of Hunt Elementary, Julie is certainly deserving of a Crystal Apple Award. Let's give her another round of applause. Our next winner of the Certified Crystal Apple Award for twenty twenty is Barton Elementary School Teacher Victoria Gilliland. Victoria is a physical education teacher who strives to find fun and creative ways to get students moving. She is always thinking of new ways to engage her students by connecting with them individually. She has a positive attitude and treats each student with kindness and respect. Victoria, your positive passion has earned you a Crystal Apple Award. Let's give our certified Crystal Apple winners a final round of applause. Now it's time to honor the dedicated classified employees who are recipients of the twenty twenty Crystal Apple Award. The first classified Crystal Apple winner is Amanda Johnson. Amanda is an instructional tutor for special education students at Ramona Alessandro Elementary School. Amanda intentionally spends time with each of our students so she can genuinely hear their stories and understand their motivations and to address their needs individually in order to guide them to greater success. Amanda, thank you for caring and congratulations on your Crystal Apple Award. The next Crystal Apple goes to Library Assistant Peggy A. Messner from Salinas Creative Arts Elementary School. Plain and simple, Peggy makes reading fun. She goes above and beyond her job description to ensure that every child who steps foot in the Salinas Library feels welcome. She creates a rich environment that has made the library a favorite place among students and staff. Peggy, this Crystal Apple Award is a testament to your outstanding efforts to help students develop a passion for reading. Rosalva Rodriguez, bilingual office assistant and health aide is our next Crystal Apple winner. Rosalva works for the Health Services Department where she plays a key role in ensuring that district students have all the state-required immunizations. She also trains and mentors new health aides to ensure they provide the best service to students. Rosalva has a friendly demeanor and a smile for everyone. We are proud to honor you with this Crystal Apple Award. Congratulations, Rosalva. The final classified Crystal Apple Award goes to M. Teresa Wilson, Human Resources Technician in the Employee Development Department. Teresa has exceptional skills and her dedication to her work is truly inspiring. She's always ready to help no matter who, no matter what, no matter when or where. You can hear Teresa's smile on the phone when she speaks with people, even those who may be challenging to work with. Thank you, Teresa, for your calm, consistent and supportive personality and work ethic. Your focus on results together has earned you a twenty twenty Crystal Apple Award. At this time, we will honor our twenty twenty crop of Golden Apple Award recipients, starting first with our managers. The Classified Manager Golden Apple Award goes to Director of Fiscal Services Janet King. Janet has done a commendable job of managing the district's budget process through much uncertainty. She is the quintessential finance director, resourceful and knowledgeable about California's budget, skills that allow her to guide the district through good and not-so-good budget cycles. Janet, it's fitting that this Golden Apple Award goes to you, but please remember, not everything that glitters is gold. Congratulations, Janet. The Certified Manager Golden Apple goes to Colleen Williams, Director of Student Wellness and Support Services. Since the state closure of schools due to the coronavirus, Colleen has played a vital role in ensuring that our district's forty-seven thousand students had the social-emotional services they needed to cope with the drastic changes brought on by the pandemic and distance learning. Colleen keeps the best interests of all children at the forefront of her work. She was a key member of the team that helped the district maneuver through the pandemic and she used that role to bring greater awareness to the need for medical and mental health services for students. Colleen, we are grateful to have someone as caring as you. You surely have earned this Golden Apple Award. Now it is time to present the next Golden Apple Award to Program Specialist Dr. Danielle Culbertson. Danielle works in the Elementary Instruction Department where she goes above and beyond to help teachers and students. Her attitude is always pleasant, kind, cheerful, and she provides service with a smile every time. Every job assignment she completes is always done with pride and effort. She embodies a sense of purpose because she understands that it is vital that advanced learners receive the exceptional curriculum to help them excel not only in the classroom, but life. Congratulations to Dr. Culbertson on her Golden Apple Award. You've earned it. We are pleased to present the final Golden Apple Award to Kimbark Elementary School Custodian Lucia Monhi. Lucia takes school cleanliness to a whole new level, something that's more important now than ever. She completes her custodial tasks with pride and even asks for more work. And Lucia is always upbeat and positive when she comes to work, greeting students and staff with a smile. Her excitement and joy is contagious, so much so that when she shows up to work, others indulge in her joy and happiness. Thank you, Lucia, for having so much pride in your work. We salute you with this Golden Apple Award. And now for our crop of twenty twenty-one Crystal and Golden Apple Award winners. We will start with the twenty twenty-one Crystal Apple Awards. And the Classified Manager to receive this prestigious award is Jim Cunningham, Director of Accounting Services. When it comes to accounting, Jim ensures the district's cash flows efficiently. He oversees millions of dollars in ASB funds, gifts to the district and school fundraisers. One of Jim's most important jobs is overseeing attendance accounting for SBC USD, the seventh-largest school district in California. Congratulations, Jim, on your Crystal Apple Award. Our next Crystal Apple Award winner is Aldo Ramirez, Director of Continuous Improvement. Aldo, a former school principal, took on added responsibility during the COVID-nineteen closure of schools. In his role as Deputy Incident Commander, Aldo helped the district mitigate the impact of school closures on students and families. A skilled facilitator, Aldo used his leadership and consensus-building abilities to help the district weather the challenges of school closures. Aldo, thank you for your dedication to the district. We are stronger today because of you. And now it's time to honor our first winner of the Certified Crystal Apple Award. Immerton Elementary Teacher Sandy Anderson is first up. Sandy is being honored with a Crystal Apple because of her true commitment to do whatever it takes to help students. She tutors students before and after school and leads several campus clubs, including the Coding Club, Lego Club and Video Club. Helping her colleagues is always Sandy's passion. Her Tech Tuesday or Tech Thursday trainings give fellow teachers opportunities to learn about Google Apps and other digital tools that help students achieve. Sandy, you deserve this Crystal Apple Award. Thank you for making hope happen. Now we will recognize the hard work of Program Specialist Asifa Gearlings, who works in the Secondary Education Department. Asifa has shown a degree of professionalism and transparency that is unmatched. She continues to show professionalism through each professional development that she facilitates at the site and district level. By taking the time to research and ensure she is knowledgeable about the topics she presents, each teacher walks away with applicable strategies and practices for immediate classroom implementation. She is a trustworthy colleague and professional. Her love for teachers and students is palpable. Thank you for choosing to bring your best self to work for our teachers, students and administrators, Asifa. You are truly deserving of this Crystal Apple Award. Program Specialist Dan Schaefer from the Employee Development Department is our next Crystal Apple Honoree. Dan has been with SBC USD for nearly three decades. For the last fifteen years, Dan has provided support in the form of mentorship to new, mild-moderate and moderate-severe special education teachers in the teacher induction program. He has significantly contributed to the improvement of the district's teacher induction program, especially for special education teachers and the students they instruct. Dan focuses on results together by not only contributing to his department, but by contributing to other departments in the district. Dan, you are an exceptional teacher and you deserve recognition for your hard work and dedication. Congratulations on your Crystal Apple. Our fourth and final certified Crystal Apple Award winner is Sangre Gonio High Teacher Ty Stockham, who teaches AP Calculus and Trigonometry. Every year, many of his students earn college credit by passing AP exams. Ty can take a student who does not understand a problem, discover their thought process, find where they went wrong, and have them do it again correctly in ten minutes or less. Every student who goes in for help walks out of Ty's classroom knowing how to do math work correctly. He finds time to serve as the Sanji Math Department chair and consistently gives his time to help students and other teachers be their best. Ty, this Crystal Apple symbolizes the amazing teacher you are. Thank you and congratulations. Now it's the perfect time to recognize our classified Crystal Apple recipients, starting with Mount Vernon Elementary School Bilingual Secretary Two, Alda Casas. Alda is always willing to go above and beyond to help both school staff and students. She always answers her phone to help, even after hours. Alda maintains a patient, calm, supportive attitude no matter the situation. Serving others with excellent customer service is second nature to her. She is well-informed about district policies, past and current, and attends many training sessions to keep Mount Vernon staff well-informed and up to date. She takes time to get to know students and parents and their individual needs in order to provide the best service possible. Alda, we are grateful for clerical staff like you. Congratulations on your Crystal Apple Award. Our next honoree is Roxanna Cota, and she is an instructional tutor for special education students at the Royal Valley High School. During class periods, Roxanna moves about the classroom, helping students in discreet ways that does not make them feel singled out. She does this by helping everyone who asks. She has a great student-teacher relationship with her students, some of whom call her mom because she looks after them and gives them help, but at the same time holds them to a high standard and expects them to work hard and try their best. Thank you, Roxanna, for making hope happen for the students of AVHS. This award is a tribute to your dedication. Now we are recognizing the hard work and dedication of a gentleman who takes pride in keeping Lincoln Elementary School clean so students have a nurturing environment that is conducive to learning. Custodian Jose Gonzalez can always be counted on to work with a smile and caring demeanor. Whenever the staff needs anything, Jose is always there to help with a positive attitude that can brighten up the day. When teachers or staff members ask him for help, Jose is always willing to help with a smile on his face. Not only is he excellent at completing job assignments, Jose always goes above and beyond his custodial duties. Congratulations, Jose, on your Crystal Apple Award. Next up is instructional tutor Claudia Popa, who works with special education students at George Brown Elementary. As an instructional tutor, Claudia worked diligently to ensure her students were connected to their classes, something that was especially important during distance learning. She believes in enlisting parents to be part of the academic team and communicates with families regularly to update them on the progress of their children. Claudia always displays a genuine interest in the progress of her students. Her dedication to the students and staff at Brown Elementary is second to none. Claudia is tireless in her efforts to visit students at home, volunteer for extra duties and make school events great. We honor Claudia's dedication with this Crystal Apple Award. It is now time to honor our four Golden Apple Award recipients, starting with our managers. First up is Director of Family Engagement, Beatrice Barajas Gonzalez. A former elementary principal, Beatrice knows the importance of enlisting parents and families in the educational process. That became even more important during the pandemic when parents found their neighborhood schools closed. Beatrice quickly mobilized her staff to support the various needs of families, from providing workshops to help them learn about Google Meet and Zoom, to supporting the needs of schools in the district. Beatrice always advocates for the removal of barriers that may keep families from getting involved in the education of their children. Beatrice, thank you for playing a key role in keeping families connected to SBC USD during this challenging time. We are honored to present you with this Golden Apple Award. Next up is the man who spent fifteen months managing the district's response to the coronavirus. When schools were forced to close in March of twenty twenty, Safety and Emergency Manager Eric Vatier sprang into action, becoming the district's Incident Commander and overseeing a team of about two dozen SBC USD managers who helped in various roles. Under Eric's leadership, the incident management team coordinated the distribution of millions of meals to students and electronic devices that allowed thousands of students to access distance learning. Eric, we could go on and on about your contributions, but we would be here for a while. Please accept this Golden Apple Award as a token of our appreciation. Now we will honor our classified Golden Apple winner, Bilingual Secretary Three, Patricia Aguilera from Arrow View Middle School. Patricia is giving, happy, calm, welcoming, kind and downright inspirational. She's often referred to as the engine of Arrow View Middle School. Always early to school, Patricia has the biggest smile to share with everyone, including administrators, teachers, staff, parents and students. She keeps school administrators abreast of all vital information and situations, contributing to the betterment of Arrow View, its students and the district. On a daily basis, regardless of the task that she's working on, Patricia always has time to help teachers. She serves with a sense of purpose, professionalism and a commitment to excellence. Thank you, Patricia. You are a worthy recipient of this Golden Apple Award. And now for our final Golden Apple winner, Warm Springs Elementary Teacher Marguerite Nicholson. When it comes to establishing trust with students, Marguerite holds herself and her students accountable to class protocols during Zoom sessions. She always takes times to explain the why of a routine and that results in equity for all students. She holds herself to the highest standards of professionalism, using her own money and time to deliver high-quality learning experiences for her students. Marguerite has written Grants for the Odyssey of the Mind program and implemented it at Warm Springs for years. Her mission is that all her students demonstrate avid principles that will result in a lifetime of academic success. Her positive passion for learning and enhancing students' learning are seen in the activities, movement, songs and questions she applies to her teaching. Thank you, Marguerite, for making hope happen. We honor you with this Golden Apple Award.
All right. Thank you all so much for your patience. And at this time, I will now, um, go back to our agenda. And we are now at four point one, Middle School Vice Principal. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approve the appointment of the following employee Harold Olivo, Middle School Vice Principal, Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Middle School, effective date, work year and salary to be determined.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. If there's no discussion, we'll take the vote. Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios?
Aye.
And Dr. Dottie Rogers, aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Four point two, Middle School Vice Principal, Human Resources. Oh, I'm sorry. And I did that out of order. So I'm going to go back to four point one. My, uh, laptop skipped. Oh, no, that was right. Sorry. Okay, four point two, Middle School Vice Principal. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approve the appointment of the following employee, Yessel Reyna, Middle School Vice Principal, Shandon Hills Middle School, effective date, work year and salary to be determined?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. If there's no discussion, we can go ahead and take the vote. Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios?
Aye.
And Dr. Dottie Rogers, aye. Motion carried. We are... We are taking off. 4.3 is being removed from the agenda, and we're now at a public hearing. Into 5.1, Initial Contract Proposal Reopener from the California School Employees Association 183. I am now opening the public hearing. Are there any comments?
There's no comment for this item, Madam President.
All right, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
There's no vote on this. It was just a public hearing.
All right, we'll just, we don't need to vote on this one. 5.2, Memorandum of Understanding, Opening a Virtual Academy for the 2021-2022 School Year between the San Bernardino Unified School District and the San Bernardino Teachers Association. This one looks like a no vote as well, but are there any, I will open the public hearing, and are there any comments?
Yes, there is. Ashley Bidasakala would like to make a comment.
All right.
There, please unmute.
Good evening, President Rogers, members of the Board and Cabinet. I'm Ashley Bidasakala, President of the San Bernardino Teachers Association. SBTA and the district worked quickly and collaboratively, and we were able to negotiate an agreement on the establishment and opening of a virtual academy. We urge your approval of this memorandum of understanding, so we can continue to focus on negotiating other important matters related to the COVID pandemic and our return to in-person learning. Thank you.
Thank you. And you indicated that was, there are no other comments?
Correct, no other comments.
All right, I will close the public hearing, and there is no vote on that one either. 5.3, Self-Governance and Administration Annual Plan and Budget 2021-2022 Special Education Continuous Improvement. I will open the public hearing. And are there any comments?
There are no comments, but this is a vote.
There is a vote, I see, on this one. All right, I'll go ahead and close. And be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the San Bernardino City Unified School District Special Education Annual Service Plan and Budget. Be it further resolved that Dr. Rachel Menares, Assistant Superintendent, Continuous Improvement, be authorized to sign all required documents relating to this plan.
So move.
Second. It's been moved in second. If there is no discussion, we will take a vote. Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt? Dr. Wyatt, are you there? All right, Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios?
Aye.
And Dr. Dally Rogers, aye, motion carry. Thank you. And 6.1, again, I will ask the question. There were none, correct?
Correct.
There are no comments. All right, then we will move to 7.0, Reports and Comments by Union Organizations. 7.1, San Bernardino Teachers Association. Is there, Ms.?
Yes. Good evening again, President Rogers, members of the Board and Cabinet. I'm Ashley Bidasakala, President of the San Bernardino Teachers Association. I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of the 3,000 members of SBTA. I would, I would like to also take a moment tonight to thank the Board for their support of Pride Month and passing a resolution this evening. As you heard from our community earlier, letting our students and staff know that they are supported and welcome is crucial, and it just might actually save someone's life. So thank you for that. Summer school is well underway. This is now our third and final week for most of our sites. We also passed a milestone last week as the Governor reopened California and the economy as we move towards our new normal. It still remains that we have to stay vigilant, as this pandemic is not over. It is crucial that we continue to encourage our community to get vaccinated. The Delta variant is highly contagious and now makes up 20% of all new cases in the U.S. And we now know that those who are not vaccinated are highly vulnerable to this variant, including our youngest learners who can still cannot access a vaccine. We are hopeful we will have, that that will happen in the next few months. However, it still remains that we have to remain vigilant, as the pandemic has not ended. And even as safety guidance evolves and is adjusted, these measures must be taken seriously to continue to ensure these environments that educators and students return to in August are safe and continue to be that way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. 7.2, California School Employee Association. Is there a representative?
Yes, hi, how are you? My name is Mr. Dalia Garcia. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, thank you. I just wanna, first of all, give you a thank you for letting me speak today. My name is, good evening, President Rogers, Board members and Cabinet members. My name is Mr. Dalia Garcia, and I'm here speaking on behalf of California Employee Association, Chapter 183. I would like to thank you for allowing me to be here to speak to the public. I would like to welcome our new Superintendent, Dr. Mr. Doc Irvin. I haven't had the opportunity to welcome him. Welcome to our family for our SBCUSD District. You will love our, you will love us, our family being part of our community. I am hoping you are able to join our virtual eBoard meeting, so we can have the honor to meet with you and you can meet our eBoard members for CSC 183. I would check with your assistant to see when your calendar is available, so you can meet with us. I work for the Personnel Commission as a Secretary Three. I hope you can take the time also to visit us. One of this, your busy days that you have, and we are located at the WAP Portable Building. So we would love to, you know, if you could drop by sometime and just say hello, that would be wonderful. Especially would like to congratulate Dr. Volkmer for his leadership of excellence through his career with the San Bernardino City Unified School District. Congratulations, Dr. Volkmer, on your retirement. It has been, he has been a great inspiring leader to our community, classified employees and certificated employees. Had, it has been an honor to work under his leadership. He's a great example of how leadership expectancy should be. Thank you, Dr. Volkmer. Thank you again for allowing me to speak. Best wishes, Mr. Superintendent Doc Irvin. And that's all I have for today. Thank you so much for letting me speak today.
Thank you. All right, 7.3, Communication Workers of America. Is there a representative? No. All right, 7.4, San Bernardino School Police Officers Association. Is there a representative? No. Okay, we will move to 8.0, Administrative Reports and Presentation. 8.1, Return to Work Update.
Good evening, Dr. Rogers, or President Rogers, Dr. Wyatt, Board, Community, Cabinet, those watching from home, glad to be here tonight. I wanted to start by saying this before we present a few slides on our employees returning to work. I wanted to spend a moment thanking our Board for their decisiveness and their actions to keep our employees and our community safe over the pandemic. Your decisions for our employees to work remotely, and our scholars to work in, have distance learning, and our employees to administer that distance learning really provided the safety needed for our workforce. And also I wanted to thank our interim Superintendent, Dr. Harold Volkmer, for his actions as well, and being very measured throughout the pandemic to make sure that we were doing what's in the best interest of this community and our employees, our scholars, and everyone associated with our district. And Board, I wanted to assure you that over time, since we'd begun, under your direction, to bring back our employees, beginning on May 10th, with the rotational schedule, our managers and classified staff, we have done a great job adhering to our safety protocols, our mitigation strategies, hats off to our managers, our classified employees, and those voluntarily reporting to offices and district sites, doing a good job making sure that we're adhering to those safety measures and keeping everyone safe. I also want to thank our Ed Services Department as we embarked on summer school, bringing employees back to work in person, our scholars welcoming our families back into our school sites, and excellent job getting summer school off the ground. All 72 schools, an amazing feat under the leadership of Anna Applegate, job well done. And then our IMT, as our IMT was deployed over the year or throughout the pandemic, that just the attention to detail with safety and our, our safety protocols, our air quality and our distancing and our signage, everything there, we've done an incredible job in San Bernardino City Unified to keep our employees safe. And so I wanted to speak tonight about the next step for employees returning to work beginning July 1, and how we're gonna do that, making sure that safety is the priority, and making sure that we keep our families, scholars, staff, safe as we return back to our sites and departments in full time. Next slide, please. And so our purpose for bringing our employees back into our offices, our school sites and departments, we want to make sure that we welcome everyone back July 1, 2021, for those who have to report in, meaning our 12-month employees, our 11-monthers that work throughout the summer, and those certificated staff as well that have open calendar. We're gonna make sure that we continue to focus on safety, safety for our scholars, our families and staff, that will always be top priority for us. We want to make sure that we continue to support staff's social emotional, social emotional health and wellness. As we know, that's a huge part of our reopening and attending to the needs of our staff. And we also are gonna continue to follow our state and local public health guidelines, which you'll hear a little bit about tonight. And as we prepare for the full reopening of the economy, which we knew happened on June 15th, we want to make sure that we're doing everything that's in the best interest of our staff to keep them safe. Next slide, please. So our mitigation strategies that we've been adhering to and doing a great job on, and that we'll continue to do as our employees come back into the workplace full-time. We're gonna make sure that we continue to have physical distancing in the workplace where appropriate. We'll continue to emphasize the correct and current use of face covering, face covering and masks as we come back. Frequent sanitizing and disinfecting of facilities and high-touch surfaces as well. We'll continue to focus on proper hand hygiene, cleanliness etiquette, free COVID-19 testing for possible exposures in the workplace, and also, as you know, deployment of contact tracing for possible exposure in collaboration with our local health department. These mitigation strategies have been in place and have kept us in a good place where we are now, with very few exposures and limited COVID-19 instances. Next slide, please. And so I'd like to spend a moment and have Sam Preasey talk about our site readiness, which we've done very well over time, and where we are today with being ready to bring back our, our employees back full-time in person. Mr. Preasey?
Thank you, Dr. Funchess, and good evening, Board President, Dr. Rogers, and Vice President, Dr. Wyatt, Board Members, Cabinet, and our community watching this evening. My name is Sam Preasey, and I'm the Administrative Operations for San Bernardino City Unified School District. This evening, I'm just gonna go over, Dr. Funchess mentioned, the district's overall readiness for full integration of staff and students. Some of this information you're gonna see is some of our classrooms, but it's also the same preparations that we made for our district administrative sites. So over the past 15 months, you know, the COVID-19 facilities, physical distancing team led by Adam Center, our supervisor of plans and records, has modified our district in preparation of student return on three different occasions with different guidances and requirements that we received. However, we are happy to report that all district sites are ready and prepared for full student and staff reintegration. Some of our key COVID facility attributes as a result of this work, and through this Board's outstanding supports, and I want to say thank you very much for the proper support, are the improvements in our indoor air quality. You know, this was a substantial investment made by the district, upgrading all of our HVAC air filters to MERV 11 and MERV 13 where possible, fully opening our air dampers, porting outside fresh air into spaces, as well as the installation of medical-grade HEPA air scrubbers exchanging our indoor air over six times per hour. We've also installed temperature screening station at entry points, along with hand washing and hand sanitizing stations throughout our occupied spaces. We've upgraded our district drinking fountains with water fillers, flushing our water systems multiple times over the period of the 15 months. We've installed, and you've probably seen them throughout our different campuses, but we've installed 380 large storage containers, which were housing student furniture. And in the process of storing and moving and storing and moving again, we have since emptied a majority of those containers and are currently in the process of having them removed from our sites. With regard to our campuses, we've also purchased and installed almost 4,000 high school desks, 2,800 middle school desks, and 9,500 elementary school desks. I know this is another fantastic longstanding improvement where students returning to campus on August 2nd will see and enjoy for many years to come. These improvements were also made in our district offices at House staff. Plexiglass barriers were also installed in those spaces where physical distancing was not able to be achieved. Maximum occupancy signs posted in communal spaces such as break rooms, lunchrooms, conference rooms, and private offices. We've also reduced occupancies.
Someone needs to mute, please.
We also reduced our occupancy in the restrooms and limiting vehicle occupancy to one person. So we've made many, many different preparations and improvements, longstanding improvements to our facilities. But given all these preparations, we are in a good position to state that the district, from a facilities perspective, is ready for full staff and student reintegration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Preasey, for that. Next slide, please. And Board, as you know, there've been a few guideline updates from the California Department of Public Health and Cal OSHA. But our district is prepared to continue with our safety protocols and mitigation strategies for right now. Until we know a little bit more, and I'll have Mr. Vatier open up to talk about those changes or those new guidelines, and then I'll come back and state where we are as a district. We're sticking with what we're doing now in terms of safety. Mr. Vatier?
Thank you, Dr. Funchess. Good evening, Board, Cabinet, and Community. I'm Eric Vatier, the Safety and Emergency Manager for your school district. So we know that Cal OSHA, which governs the responsibility of employers to keep their employees safe, recently made some rulings as it relates to restrictions within work environments and relaxed mask-wearing restriction options as well. And so in our district, we've opted to go ahead and maintain the mask-wearing. And the primary reason for this is that CDC has not yet updated K-12 school guidance for the nation. And so our state of California and our San Bernardino County Department of Public Health are waiting for the CDC to send out new guidance as it relates to a K-12 school environment, meaning what will our classrooms look like, what will the expectation be in those settings for our teachers, for our students? We are waiting for that to come down, and we are hearing that within the next one to two weeks, that should come out. Then, leading the way for the California Department of Public Health, generally within a week, to revise guidance and push that out to schools, so that we can then adjust and make sure that what we're doing is uniform across our system, that our administrative sites match the same requirements that we're seeing at a K-12 environment. And so we are constantly getting updates as it relates to the protocols. We know within our county, we, if we still had the tiered system, which we no longer do, we would now be in the yellow tier. Happy to report that yesterday we received an update from Public Health that we are at 1.7 new cases per 100,000, the lowest we've been in many, many, many months. They are encouraging folks to still get vaccinated, so that is a big push that's gonna help us as we relax the restrictions, as they relax the restrictions for K-12 work environments, and so that we can return to a new sense of normalcy. So, thank you, Dr. Funchess. Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Eric. And so for now, as we bring employees back into the workplace for reintegration, we'll continue to stick with our mask-wearing, our protocols for face coverings and masks. We feel like that'll make, that'll keep us safe, right? As we, as I took you through the first slide, and we talked about making sure that our family, staff, and, and community is safe, that's one of the things that we feel is very important right now. Last slide, please, or next slide? And so, along with what we're doing to reintegrate, reintegrate our employees, there's been a mass communication, or mass communications effort for our employees, communications have done a great job putting up a webpage, all things COVID-related, information about vaccinations, COVID-19, staff resources, so that'll still be there. And the training that we provided thus far, we provided information for employee accommodations, any employees that might need accommodations based on any health we've provided information for employee accommodations, any employees that might need accommodations based on any health concerns. They can, um, visit our affirmative action office to get support with that. Our SBC USD COVID nineteen training for all employees has been underway. Our COVID nineteen safety plan for safe reentry, teaching our employees what to do before you come to work, uh, what you do if you get to work and you feel any symptoms or things of that nature. Uh, the exposure protocols that we go through, people are familiar with that. And our SB ninety-five paid sick leave that guarantees that our existing sick leaves won't be tapped into should, uh, employees have any COVID related symptoms, there's eighty hours or ten days of paid sick leave from, from the government. So we've done that. We'll continue to do that as well as we reintegrate and focus on, um, employee health and wellness and employee safety as well. And last slide. So Board, we want to reassure you that as we bring back employees and re-integrate them full time and get prepared for in-person learning in the twenty twenty, in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, safety is our number one priority. Keeping our employees informed as well and making sure that they have what they need to be safe in the workplace. We've done that over the past few months. We'll continue to do that as well.
Thank you so much, Dr. Funchess. Okay, Dr. Flores?
Thank you, Dr. Funchess and team. I appreciate the, the presentation. I just have a couple of questions. Um, I was glad to see that, uh, you said we, uh, people will have to wear masks. So just to clarify, is everyone require, required to wear a mask?
Correct. Everyone that steps in on our campuses right now are required to wear masks.
Our employees as well?
Correct.
Okay. And what if an employee does not, refuses to wear one?
We haven't had that yet and we just have reminders, uh, through our managers to let the employee know, hey, we have mask requirements at this time. And so we've done well there. We haven't had those instances.
Haven't had any of those. Okay, good. Because just as I was reading also that that Delta variant is, uh, very strong and for us not to slack off because, um, if it does spread this fall, we'll, then, you know, we'll, we'll be very, very bad for us. Um, but so hopefully wearing the mask and, you know, washing our hands and all of that, uh, will mitigate. And then my other question is related to the air purifiers. Are they in every single classroom?
Well, Mr. Preesi, if you want to take that question?
Sure. Yeah, yes, they are. Uh, every single classroom has a fifteen hundred square foot rated, uh, air scrubber.
And do they have filters that are replaced on a regular basis?
They do. They have a pre-filter MERV seven that's replaced every six months and they also have a HEPA filter that's replaced at a forty thousand hour runtime. And it has a timer on the unit that actually indicates when the filter replacement is required. And we've also built that into our work order system. And we've also purchased, uh, two exchange filters. So we already have them in stock and in district.
In the district. So we have, we have the, all the replacements on hand already.
We've also purchased, uh, spare parts in the event that we have a motor that goes out or other function within the unit that goes out. So we have, uh, spare parts and all filters.
What's the rationale of only, uh, interchanging them every six months and not more regularly?
Sure. Yeah, there's, uh, different filters that require different periodicities, manufacturer specifications, and that's what we're following is the manufacturer spec.
Uh huh.
The summer would require a three-month cycle, like for instance, our HVAC units that are on our rooftops. Other units would require a six-month rotation. Others even have a one-year rotation. It just depends on the unit and the manufacturer.
So the HVAC is, uh, that's on, on the roof?
Yeah, like those rooftop units or the units that are behind the classrooms. Those would be.
Are those different, are those different from air purifiers?
They are.
What's the difference?
Uh, the difference is providing a cooling medium and the other one is just like, uh, a very fancy fan with a very high efficient filter attached to the fan.
That's the air purifier?
That's right. The air scrubber would be like a really fancy, uh, fan in your house. Whereas the air, the air conditioning system would provide a cool.
What do they function as? Or what, I mean, is it, is there one per square footage for every classroom or is the square, is it, or if the, if the classroom is bigger, does it, uh, need more than one air purifier?
Exactly. Like if for our emu rooms or large kitchens that are in excess of that fifteen hundred or five hundred square foot, depending on the type of unit that we have in place, then we would have multiple units.
Oh, you do? Okay, great. Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. And Mr. Tillman?
Yeah, so, Mr. Funchess, just to start with, uh, you mentioned the, uh, eighty hours in case someone, um, has an illness associated with, uh, with the COVID nineteen. I just want to be clear for transparency, that ends September thirtieth, right?
It does end September thirtieth.
I just want to make sure because we start the school year, I want to make sure employees know that after September thirtieth, unless the federal government extends it, that ends then.
Correct, Mr. Tillman.
Thank you.
September thirtieth.
Yeah. And then, um, can we go back to the slide, slide four? And then I want to, uh, commend the superintendent and staff on doing a great job with the opening of summer school. But I think summer school really showed us some of the issues and concerns in opening up in August and, um, I've talked to, uh, some teachers and I just want to make sure because, um, it's the presentation sounded like everything was done. But I've heard from some teachers that they have a problems finding some of their furniture. Is that the case?
So, uh, Sam, if you can jump in on that and then I'll talk about what we'll do in terms of after, after action review, Mr. Tillman, for summer school.
Sure. Yeah, most definitely. We still have some furniture that is arriving. So some of the requests that we had because they saw vacant classrooms were those, those classrooms that were going to be receiving new furniture that was still to be received. Uh, but what we did is we communicated with those sites, uh, well in advance of the actual summer school start date to let them know what classrooms were going to be receiving furniture and to make sure they had alternative plans at that site to not utilize those classrooms for summer school. So this way it wouldn't impact their, uh, utilization of those classrooms. Some folks decided that they really wanted to use those rooms. So the weekend, uh, leading up to summer school, we were actually doing a lot of modifications to those folks that just really wanted to utilize a particular room. Uh, so we did do some modifications last minute, uh, just before the impact of summer school. But those, as of Monday, uh, the first day of summer school, vacant classrooms were still receiving new, uh, new furniture.
I guess the, that's not my question. My question is, I, I'm hearing from teachers that, uh, when they're, when they, when they go back to their classroom, that number one, that the, the furniture that left their classroom wasn't totally marked. So there was no way for the people to put the furniture back in their rooms. That was deemed their furniture. So someone would see some furniture missing and then, uh, and then the, some of the furniture, I mean, when you go into the room, some of the furniture and rooms need to be cleaned because, because of course they haven't been used in a year, right? So I'm just, the one thing that's great right now is that the district has been given a lot of extra one-time money and it can solve these problems if we identify them early. So I would suggest that, I don't know what you guys' plan is, but I think we should have teachers go back to their sites sooner than just a couple of days before class like normal. So number one, they can go into the site, their classroom, make sure everything is there as they expect to be there. If things are missing, then maybe we can make sure that, say for instance, if a teacher had a, a cabinet and the cabinet's not there and they can't find their cabinet, then maybe we can make sure they can purchase a cabinet to put back in there. And then, uh, if, if we, if it is the case that a lot of the rooms that sat for a year, the furniture that is in there is dusty, then maybe we can, um, help augment the teams that are at the site, if they don't have enough capacity to clean all the rooms and bring in some folks to do the cleaning. Have you all thought about that?
Yes. So, Mr. Tillman, here, there are two things that, uh, we're doing to address that. Number one, we're planning an after-action review with our district, uh, managers, principals, some teachers, um, union, to make sure that we grasp the magnitude of what just happened. We did a great job with summer school, but we also learned some things that'll inform what we do in the new school year. So we'll capture that and to look at how we improve. And then the professional development days in July, what we're doing is repurposing one of those days so that school sites have the time, just like you're talking about, for teachers to go in full day and do what they need to do at the site to get prepared, uh, days before the school year opens. So we have that built in as well and we'll give the teachers time to do that. That's the plan.
And then we make another suggestion because I know, Mr. Irvin, I've heard him say the number of times the importance of the professional development days. And I know that he has plans for professional development days. If I'm wrong, he can chime in and tell me, Mr. Tillman, you know what you're talking about. But I've heard him talk a number of times about the importance of the professional development days for teachers. So this might be something where we want to add a day or two for teachers to go back to the classroom just to make an assessment of their classroom. Maybe you guys can do something where those, those, um, uh, storage bins, maybe there's a day you can take everything out that's not marked and, and have the teachers pick out what is theirs. If they're all there at the same time, because I understand that's a, a problem. And all the things that were taken out of specific classes weren't marked with the room number. So I'm just, I'm just offering up, uh, uh, suggestions because the time is going to go by fast. I think the worst thing for us to do would be to treat just like it's normal times and wait until three days before school starts. And the teacher opened the class, the furniture that's in there is not what they deem their furniture. Stuff is missing, uh, it's not clean and we don't have time to respond. So it's, you know, the end of June now, but maybe we can pick a couple of days in July. And I would, you know, even consider adding, and I know it has to be negotiated, but adding a couple of professional development days where teachers can use those time to come back to do just that because this is and are unique times that we've never dealt with before because of the COVID nineteen. We've never had a time where someone hasn't been in their classroom for a year, right? So it's going, and we never had a time when, when teachers come back to a classroom that had been totally cleared out or, or at least half of the desk and chairs and some of the furniture was cleared out and all being brought back in now. Uh, so I just think if, if, if we can use some of that one-time money to facilitate it by bringing folks back extra couple of days, it might be worth it. Thank you.
Mr. Tillman, thank you for your recommendation. We'll, we'll follow up on that, okay? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Okay, um, Dr. Funchess, there are no other, um, questions or comments. So thank you all again for your presentation. We appreciate it and look forward to the updates. We're now going to move to eight point two California School Dashboard Local Indicators Board Report.
So Board, in front of you, you have the local indicators report that basically stating that our local indicators will stay the same for the new school year, uh, because the CAFSP was suspended for this last year. So our local indicators will be the same ones that we've had in the past.
And Mrs. Applegate, was there something you were gonna, were sharing or are you just referring to what was?
It, it's just a report. It's not a presentation.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, we will now move to nine point oh reports and comments, nine point one, beginning with Board Member Comments. Mr. Tillman?
Uh, thank you, uh, Madam President and, uh, leading into the opening, I'm glad we talked about, we have the agenda, but can we also, I know, and normally what we do, we open, we might have classrooms that have fifty kids in it, right? And we might take a month to level those classes. Can we, because we have this one-time money, can we, uh, work to hire substitute teachers faster so that we can, um, decrease those class sizes sooner? Has that been thought about? And can we just consider that?
So, so we are in the process, um, bringing in, uh, extra substitute teachers or guest teachers, as we call them, to do not only that, but make sure that we have enough for the workforce for virtual academy and our comprehensive school sites. So, Mr. Tillman, I'll make sure that we get, give you a follow-up on that, um, based on the opening of school, the first few weeks of school as we level classes.
Yeah. And then, um, the, another thing is making sure that, uh, I, I'm, I'm sure you probably have, but I know a lot of the technology was taken out of those classes during the, uh, COVID. And because we have one-time money, that should be an easy fix. As long as we assess it early and move forward, same thing with asking of teachers and staff if they need new technology, now would be the time to do, to do that. And because we have that one-time money, I think it'd be a good thing to do. Um, you know, I, I, I do, I, I, I'm, I'm hoping that people are grasping the hundreds of millions of dollars that we've received to mitigate this kind of stuff. I do have a fear that it's not being grasped, uh, you know, because it should be used to make things better for everyone. Uh, I, I, I want to thank, uh, Mr. Irvin for helping solve a problem with some of the busing because the, 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 even the transportation was in some mode of thinking about they had to save money and eliminate, uh, bus stops close to people's houses. That doesn't have to happen because we have one-time money now. I'm not saying it's going to be here, uh, forever, but for the next couple of years, we do have additional funding. And someone has to have the wherewithal to say, we have hundreds of million dollars to help mitigate the, the problems caused by COVID nineteen. And these type of things can be, um, these problems can be solved easily with that one-time funding. So I hope that those, those type of discussions are going on now be, before school starts to make things a whole lot better when school starts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Dr. Flores?
Oops. Thank you, Dr. Rogers.
Okay, you're all.
Um, I want first to start out, uh, to talk to Dr. Volkmer. Uh, Dr. Volkmer, this is your last school board meeting with us. And just want to express my gratitude, all our gratitude for, you know, taking us through this pandemic. And I know it wasn't an easy job, um, but you did it with, uh, grace and excellence and, you know, passion and compassion. Um, and, uh, we just want to thank you, um, for all of that. Um, you know, we've been together, you've been together with Danny longer than with me. So, uh, and, uh, so we, we know you pretty well. And so, well, you'll be missed, but you're also, we also think you deserve, uh, uh, your retirement to be with your wife and your family and go do all the things that you love to do and, uh, so forth. So just from my bottom of my heart, I just want to thank you. Uh, I also want to thank the Honorable, uh, Myra Sabios, our colleague, and give her congratulations for graduating from Cal State San Bernardino, uh, with her master's and her school psychologist certification credential. Uh, that is no small feat. Uh, and so just, you know, want to congratulate you. And that's amazing. That's amazing, amazing. And I just look forward to, you know, your career and, and of course, helping many, many, many kids and so forth. And, uh, and I guess I have an ask, uh, and it's related to Mr., uh, Tillman's. Um, you know, and also I had parent reach out to me about, uh, transportation and busing. And Madam President, I would like us to review the busing policy, uh, so that we can take a look at it and see, you know, how we can, um, revise it, uh, to mitigate some of the issues and, uh, so forth, uh, that we can look at it. Uh, and so that, that is our, one of our, um, responsibilities in reviewing policies. Um, and also working with our administrators and staff and, uh, Mr. Irvin. And then lastly, I, I just want to give a big shout out to all of us. And, um, I really want to thank you, Dr. Rogers, for the comments you made on Friday, uh, at our, uh, twenty twenty graduation. And, Mr. Tillman, you weren't there, but you're the one that spurred us on to, you know, provide a twenty twenty graduation, in-person graduation, if we could. You would have just loved it. There was like eight hundred kids there. And I, I just, and there, there's a picture. Okay, keep, keep showing it, David.
Beautiful.
It's just beautiful. Uh, show the next one, David. And here we are, you know, giving out, there's Dr. Rodriguez and I think, um, who is that? Okay, here's another graduate. All the colors were there, all the, the kids' colors from their schools. It was just magical and you can tell, you could feel the love, you could feel they were just so happy, the parents were happy. Uh, and I just want to thank, um, here's one of the valedictorians. Uh, I just want to thank, uh, Mrs. Applegate, uh, and Mr. Tex Acosta and his team for, uh, planning this incredible, incredible event. It was spectacular. And I do believe they only had three weeks to do it, but they hit a grand slam. And so it was, it was just. And so it was, it was just beautiful. So um, Dr. Hill was there, Ms. Medina was there, I was there, and Dr. Rogers was there, um, and Dr. Wyatt. So it was, it was just, you would have loved it, Mr. Tillman. I sent you a little, a little sarcastic note, but.
Worse to be, I saw my neighbor coming down in a cap and gown, she said, where were you? It felt horrible, but.
Oh yeah, but it was beautiful. You would have loved it. So I just wanna uh, end with that, Madam President.
Thank you. And Dr. Wyatt?
Well, thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Dr. Flores. That was really a segue into my first comment. And I, I think you left out a special someone that you know as well, uh, that helped coordinate the twenty twenty graduations. So you might wanna give her a little uh, shout out too, which is your daughter. Um, who did, did a wonderful job. And uh, you know, I'm glad that you, you gave Mr. Tillman a little bit of a grilling there. Um, I'm sure he had a very important reason, very important reason that he wasn't there. I mean, extremely important, because I know Mr. Tillman wanted to be there. Um, but it was great that his neighbor said, hey, where were you? That, that was enough right there, Mr. Tillman. So thanks for having some humility there, cuz.
And Dr. Wyatt, if I can butt in a little bit, I forgot to mention that Mr. Irvin and Dr. Volkmer were there and.
Oh yeah, we had a huge crew.
Yeah, they had, they were all present. They, they did a wonderful job. So go ahead.
Yeah, and I'm sure Madam President uh, and others will probably talk about it. And um, I think the most important thing that we did as a board is we kept our word um, to the class of twenty twenty. And I, I'm getting a little emotional because uh, you know, this, this past year and a half has been extremely, extremely difficult, very hard for all of us. And um, you know, class of twenty twenty, as we heard, was almost there, right? They were almost at the end of that, that race and the finish line was there and then boom, COVID hit and we took a lot away from them and um, but they made history. They're, they're the first class that has a, had a virtual graduation, a drive-through graduation, and the opportunity for an in-person graduation. And um, the twenty twenty group started small and ended up huge. You know, I, I heard it like the beginning of the week, oh, it's gonna be like three hundred. And then like you said, Dr. Flores, over eight hundred. And uh, wow, what an amazing turnout. You know, that was the way to really punctuate the end of a very difficult year and a half, a very difficult two years. And um, you know, I, I do appreciate Tex and Anna for facilitating and emceeing such a wonderful graduation. Let alone all our other graduations of twenty twenty-one, which were outstanding, very outstanding. Great job to our staff who coordinated all those graduations and our kids and our families for us to be able to celebrate such amazing achievements. And um, Mr. Acosta had a really neat little um, um, activity he did. And you know, he was asking folks, you know, because usually we ask, what are you gonna do next year? But in this case, we were asking, well, what did you do last year? We'll probably never get that opportunity to ever do that again. And um, I, I was so proud of our twenty twenty graduates. So many of them have already advanced their lives as young adults in so many ways. When he asked how many of you are working, my gosh, it seemed like eighty-five, ninety percent of those kids stood, stood up. Stood up. And I was like, wow, these kids are already positively contributing to our society, to our local economy. Plus they're going to school on top of all that. Um, and so that, that was just amazing that he did that. And you know, I applaud him for, for such an amazing activity to see what our twenty twenty students have done in a very short period of time. And, and I think we all have a lot to be proud of in regards to our students from San Bernardino City Unified. Uh, they're out there making a lot of great things happen. Um, personally, I just wanna thank uh, Police Chief Paulino and his officers in department for providing outstanding services to our Samdill County Superintendent Schools graduation ceremony. Um, this is about the third or fourth year they've done it, maybe more, four or five. Uh, and they've done a class act professional job every darn time and without incident. Um, I just wanna thank you, Chief, to you and your staff for always representing Samdill City Unified School District in a exemplary and professional manner. But also keeping our kids and our staff safe at our graduation for the county school. So thank you for that. Dr. Volkmer, I think Dr. Flores said a lot and um, you know, I, I believe in I get pretty emotional about things like this. But uh, I just wanna say thank you to you as well for your amazing career, first of all, and your, your absolute dedication and professionalism contributions to making our community a better place to live. Uh, for making our district a better place for kids to go to school and for our staff to work at. Um, you're an absolutely incredible mentor. Uh, I wish I had even more time to spend with you selfishly, just to learn from you. Uh, so thank you for everything that you've done. I'm, I'm excited for you and your, your amazing uh, next life in retirement. I know you have lots of beautiful grandbabies and children to uh, to just spend your time with. So what, what a great way to go out and just enjoy life. So thank you, Dr. Volkmer, for everything. And then um, you know, folks, just like I said, this past year and a half and two years has been very difficult. Um, you know, I wanna applaud our staff and our kids and our families for being resilient. You know, we use that word quite often, but boy, did we prove that um, these past two years. You know, I hate the word pivot, but boy, we didn't just pivot, we transformed how we educate kids um, and how we teach as well. So uh, it's been a long time coming to come back to quote-unquote norm. Uh, I don't know if we'll ever go back to normal again, cuz I think we've learned a lot and advanced our technology and, and our ability to teach and educate kids. Uh, so I'm really proud of that. And just going into next year, um, I think summer school's been a trial run for us. We've been able to learn a lot from summer school. My gosh, we had a lot of kids come. I was talking to Ms. Applegate and I think it was almost fourteen thousand students. That's a significant number, folks. That's bigger than a lot of districts in our area. Uh, so thank you to our kids and our families and our staff for, you know, coming back to summer school and E S Y for students with disabilities. And um, doing that trial run for us going into next year. And um, just wanna say, you know, going into next year, let's go into next year with a lot of optimism. Um, you know, with a positive attitude. And you know, I think we've heard often to, to go slow to go fast. And I think that's important for us to, to apply going into next year and uh, to, to really apply the plan that we have in place and do it methodically. So those are my comments, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Hill?
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I, I was trying to make a list of people I wanted to uh, give accolades for the good work you're doing, but I know I'm gonna leave someone out. So I'm just saying to all of you, if you get a paycheck from this district and I know you've been working hard, I want to say congratulations for being a part of this great team and for the good work you're doing. We are proud of you. Uh, to uh, Doc, Dr. Volkmer and all retirees, we wish you the best. As you know, I flunked twice. I hope you do better than I did. So uh, wishing you the best, just go out there and, and enjoy and do some things that you wish you'd had time to do before now. But congratulations to all of you. You deserve it. I wanna also say congratulations, and I hope I'm not taking Mr. Irvin's thunder uh, to the uh, Crystal and Golden Apple Award winners. We appreciate you and the good work you have done. But in addition to you, wanna say congratulations to our students and staff members, especially our sports teams uh, and others who've um, uh, gone to uh, into uh, competition with others. And I had an opportunity to attend. I know it was at least ten graduations. In fact, my cap and gown has spent more time in my car than I have. But I know I only have to pull it out one more time for summer school. But I do want to apologize to Middle College High School. I knew many of you were there. But uh, I selected to go to Pacific since they were both held at the same time. But do want to congratulate you for a job well done. And with that, uh, I'm, I'm so proud to be on this board for my tenth year. And we, we are doing some marvelous things and I can see them only getting better. So with our teams and that's everybody, those who are working out on the campuses, on the grounds, in the classroom, at the district level, just wanted to say to you, thank you for just a marvelous job. And you know, together we can. Thank you. And uh, for those, I didn't wish uh, Happy Father's Day to, at our last meeting. I'm wishing you a belated Happy Father's Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. And Ms. Rosas Medina?
Yes, so what I did is I uploaded a picture of the graduation. I just wanted to share really quickly for the, this was a class of twenty twenty. And one of the students that walked by had um, this name, which um, if I can see in the picture. I mean, it was important to see. Everyone was excited. Uh, and they were happy with all of the things that was going on. Uh, she came back and you got to see her friends that I hadn't seen in a while. Had this cap that actually says, I'm standing here today because you helped me find my way. And I know it's a series of her parents and her family. But I also want to uh, you know, congratulate our district too, because we, we made sure, we put every effort. And I, and I, again, with what was said earlier, Mr. Tillman, thank you so much for pushing that as well. And all the board and staff, it was a beautiful ceremony, I have to say. And um, Tex Acosta did an amazing job. Anna, everybody, all the whole team did an amazing job. And uh, just seeing the, the excitement and uh, you know, being there and so forth, it was, it was really nice. I also wanted to say that I was at the Juneteenth. Um, it was at the family, uh, no, it was at uh.
New Hope Life Center.
Yeah, New, New Hope. And it was through Cope, there was a collaboration with ICU C. Uh, it was a Sierra Club. There were so many different organizations that were there. Uh, it was really fun. And, and it was not just about, you know, getting to see people and having great food. But it was also recognizing uh, you know, Juneteenth uh, as a national holiday as well, now that the proclamation came through with uh, President Biden. So I'm really excited that this is something that we're pushing forward, we need to do. I know this is also Pride Month, but we also have to make sure that Juneteenth, throughout the district, there's a way that we can celebrate this and do education across the board for all of our students to really understand that this is the true uh, Independence Day, cuz you cannot uh, celebrate freedom when not everybody was free, when the July fourth comes up. Um, so not everyone was free. And I think this is a great way to, to recognize. So it was really fun. Uh, Dr. Rogers was there. Um, uh, many people were there. I'm trying to see who else might have been from the school district, but yes, it was exciting. I also wanted to again thank all the students that came and spoke during the, the recognition item two point one uh, for Pride Month. It was wonderful to hear the stories. I know I said it before, I just wanna make sure I say again. Thank you, everyone, and happy belated Father's Day as well. Oh wait, and Dr. Volkmer, I cannot thank you enough for your patience. I know you're, you're in a position that, you know, we, as board members, you know, we, we ask for things, we uh, sometimes bicker. Uh, but at the end of the day, um, the amount of uh, the way you communicated, especially to me personally, has made a huge difference. And um, you know, I wanted to thank you. We're definitely gonna be missing you, but uh, you are on your way to retiring. Well deserved. I hope uh, there's a way where we can bring you back, back in other capacities. I know that we're working, working with our retirement, our retired um, employees and so forth. So hopefully we can uh, do something there. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. And Ms. Sabios?
Thank you, uh, Madam President. So just really quickly again, um, just kinda wanna ditto with what um, everybody has already said. Um, I, I just wanna say thank you um, to all of the, you know, staff, employees, teachers um, for these, this last year in particular, um, but the last two years. And um, also express my, my farewells to uh, Dr. Volkmer. Um, I didn't get a lot of time to work with him, but this, the short amount of time that I did get. Um, I really appreciated um, your, you know, um, your guidance and, and, you know, bringing me on board. So I really do appreciate um, you and wish you the best in retirement. Um, also thank you, everyone, for the congratulations. Um, I, unlike Mr. Tillman, was very, very sad that I was not able to attend the, the twenty twenty graduate cer- ceremony. I was really bummed. Unfortunately, I was not in town, but um, but I, I did attend the other graduations. Um, and I was really, really excited to um, have my first set of graduations, have them be in person. So um, again, you know, thanks to all of the board for uh, giving our students that um, you know, the ability to walk that stage and, and close out their year um, that way. Because it also provided me with that same um, you know, experience. I graduated with our uh, scholars on that stage. I did not get a chance to um, do it at Cal State. Uh, I think that they were having a virtual uh, ceremony. They didn't do it in person. So it's not the same thing. So I opted not to do it, but I had ten of them that I got to attend and celebrate. And so I graduated ten times with you all. Um, so again, just thank you to everyone and um, I really look forward to this upcoming year. Um, a lot of changes, I know. Um, but I really look forward to it. So again, thank you, everyone, so much and uh, happy belated Father's Day to everyone as well.
Thank you, Ms. Sabios. And congratulations to you as well. I know the feeling. I put on my uh, robe for the class of twenty twenty-one and I felt just like them and was even, even more excited. Was able to see my son graduate this past uh, Sunday. So it's been a class of twenty twenty-one um, excitement. But yes, the twenty twenty graduation, to see all those colors together, I haven't seen that ever. Um, I know um, we had one time when we were together with Pacific during a, you know, a time when they were doing some uh, modifications. And yes, Mr. Tillman, you missed Cardinal City twice. How could you do that? But I did represent. So um, we are just grateful for everyone that made that happen. Um, it's easy to make a recommendation, but someone has to make it happen and, and it was a stellar job. And so we so much appreciate that. Um, I wanted to just again reserve some of my time to say, Dr. Volkmer, you're actually on my screen. I see you. Um, I just again appreciate you. I've said it over and over again. And now I feel like sings the song, I'm gonna uh, have to sing that song. Now it's time to, but not quite yet. We won't finish those lyrics. But we have appreciated you. I have personally appreciated you. You, we have talked more probably ever in life, as long as we've known us, but talked equally as much. During a unprecedented time, we probably said that just far too many times to each other. But look where we are and you were right there in the forefront. And as they um, share about the things that you, you know, have done. I, I've said it before, I heard you give the speech a few years back about being the NAV. And the NAV turned into the legacy and turned into now is going to try to retire. And I just appreciate, um, I know you, you know a lot, you've learned and you know, and you, you've been in education forever. But I will all, I will never forget that I had the opportunity to teach, teach you something that you didn't know. And that was how to use Facebook, FaceTime, I'm sorry, FaceTime by accident, but you did learn and I won't forget that. But you have been stellar and we appreciate you um, so very, very much. I watched you on every graduation, create education plans right on the spot for every graduate to ensure that if they didn't know where they were going, ultimately in the two seconds that you spent with them, they knew where they were gonna go. So again, just appreciate you, celebrate you and um, just look forward to seeing more of what you will be doing in the future. And then lastly, um, just to your point, Dr. Flores, I definitely have reached out to Superintendent Irving as well um, to revisit the, the policy around transportation. And so we definitely should be hearing that information coming forth really, really soon. So thank you all and those are my comments. And we're now going to go to nine point two Superintendent and Staff.
Yeah, just a couple of things. Um, one, uh, I'll be sending out my superintendent entry plan to the board for review. Um, and I'll probably put it in the board update. And then at that point, I'll have a conversation about sharing it with uh, the general public. Um, and then being that is uh, Dr. Volkmer's last day, I'm going to, the staff will, um, the assistant suits wants to make some comments and then we're gonna turn it over to Harold, since this is last, Dr. Volkmer's, is his last board meeting. I'll turn it over and start with Dr. Manares.
Thank you, Superintendent Irvin. So Dr. Volkmer, I, I knew when this day would come years ago when I started hearing that you were getting ready for retirement, that it would be like a really big to do, right? Because you've been in the district for as long as you've been. Like, we can't, I can't go anywhere with you. Or someone doesn't know you and knows you well. And they don't just like know you, they know you well. So to be doing this virtually just feels a little anticlimactic, but it is what it is. Um, I, I want to personally thank you for being um, such a great mentor, for stepping in when Dr. Marsden left us. Um, but doing such a, a great job. And I'm, I'm going to take with you, take with me three things that you would tell me frequently. I wrote them down again, so I don't forget. I might have to like, you know, I'm not into tattoos, but do something. So I keep them in my, my repertoire. First one is um, live your best life. So you're really good at doing that. You, you, you show us how to do it on a regular. I probably didn't say it exactly the way you say it, but I know that's what you mean. So anything we're doing to be, to live our best life doing that. So that's one of the things. things. The other one that I know for certain is everything is temporary. So remembering that when, when things just start to feel like they're bigger than you can handle, it's all temporary. And then finally, I use my own words in it, but you, you model it all the time, all the time you model the importance of the people and that people make the difference. And, and the people make the difference because we're here to serve students, children, right? And so I want to again, thank you. I'm so grateful that somehow I ended up in San Bernardino City Unified and somehow I got to work under you and, and, and learn with and from you. And you're going to be missed, but I still have your cell number. So now you may not remember how to respond back because we all know technology is not your great pursuit. That's a little bit of a roast there in a public setting. There you go. But anyway, you, you deserve it. Your family deserves to have you 100% and I know you're looking forward to being grandpapa. So thank you for everything. I think I'll turn it over to Dr. Funches.
Thank you, Senator Funcher. Kind of cut out there. Dr. Volkermer, I just wanted to say thank you. And I always tell this story. I remember him bringing me on way back in 1998 as a fourth and fifth grade combination classroom teacher. Man took a chance on this young kid who wanted to do some good things for, for other young people. And you saw that in me and I appreciate that. And then over the years as well, as I've moved up the ranks and you've supported me every step of the way and have, have been in my corner. So I, I will always remember that. And, and there's one thing that is consistent about your leadership and that's bringing calm to any circumstance or situation. Some of us are a little bit high strung, right? And, and there are issues that we have to solve, but your ability to bring calm to a situation is commendable, noted, and it's one for us to continue to, to use as we move forward. We'll definitely miss your presence, but like Dr. Manares said, we have your cell phone number. We know where you are. So thank you, Dr. Volkermer, for all that you've, you've been a blessing to me. So much appreciated. Thank you, sir. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Dr. Funches. I, I wrote a little poem for you there, Dr. Volkermer. So many things, but what does Harold Volkermer stand for? Hardworking gentleman with an amiable spirit, who's a rock star in our book, an outstanding mentor, a leader that serves, dedicated to making people feel like they matter, valiant, optimistic, loyal, leaves a legacy, kind, observant, mindful, mega star, empathetic and reliable. You have been with all of us, all 8,000 of us in some way, shape or form through all our ups and downs in our career. You make the time for all of us to make us feel valued and important and you never missed a milestone for any of us. And so, you know, you have been a pillar of strength, of dedication and a man of honor, integrity. And when I think of what kind, what do I want to be when I grow up? I think of you. Thank you for your service, sir.
Mrs. Applegate.
Thank you. So Dr. Volkermer, it's been over, well, close to 30 years probably early on and you were one of the very first people that really believed in me. I remember you encouraging me and, and telling me that, you know, leadership would be a great place to be. And you made me believe in myself more than I did at the time. And I thank you so much for that. And I also know that all along, all along, not only my career, but as Sandra has said, everyone's career, you have been there to guide us and to look out for us and to be that, to be that crucial lookout. I remember when I was at Lincoln as a new VP, running around in heels, which I quickly learned, don't wear heels to Lincoln because of the huge campus. You would come and you would check on me and I thought, my gosh, he is so busy. He's an assistant superintendent, but he would find time to come and, and check on me. Are you okay? How are things going? Because you know, it was a very large school at the time, over 1,400 kids back in those days. So I just, I know you have that personal touch with so many of us and we all feel it. And we're going to miss you very, very much because you would take time out of your day to make sure that we were okay. And that's what made it San Bernardino a great place to work. You've been that constant force and you've been that constant person to look out for us. And I will try and remember what you tell me about taking care of myself because you've also been pushing all of us to make sure that we have life balance. And, and it means a lot that it meant that much to you as our boss, you know, for us to have that balance in our lives. So I will hear that little voice telling me to go back to do what I need to do to take care of myself. And I'll try to be a little bit more obedient, but thank you for everything. I really appreciate you being my mentor all these years. We're definitely going to miss you, but you're going to love being a grandparent. You're going to something fantastic. It's a whole other world that you're going to really enjoy. So enjoy your retirement. Thank you.
Dr. Volkermer, I also, I'm sorry, I just want to add that I really appreciate how much you made me feel like I mattered. You know, you could be, you could be that to every single person that you worked with, but you also were that for me. So whenever we would be in a group and you would talk to me, I felt like I was the only person in the room. And that's a rare gift to be able to make people feel they matter that much. I'm really going to miss hearing about all of your micro adventures. And I certainly see that as a, as a challenge for myself to go out and as Rachel shared, live my best life. And I know that your example is one that will certainly challenge us all to do better in that regard. And I just really want to thank you for your leadership. Calm is a good word. Caring is also a really good word. And I've felt both of them from you this year. So thank you so much.
We're going to have Harold close. Dr. Volkermer?
Well, excuse me. Thank, thank you for all, I certainly was not expecting all that. But thank you for those very kind and probably very generous comments. It's, it's hard to believe that this is the, the last one of, you know, what I've calculated to be pretty close to 500 board meetings as, as a cabinet member. Now I know that's not much to Mr. Tillman because if he hasn't told you, he's been on the board for 25 years. Sorry, Mr. Tillman, it just seemed so appropriate for the evening. But I suppose my first order of business is going to be to see what the rest of the world does on the first and third Tuesday nights of the evening and what I've been missing for a few years. But seriously, I want to, I want to, I'll start with the cabinet. I, I was thinking about doing this at another time, but thank you so much for your, your very kind comments. You, you know how I feel about you. I think the world of each and every one of you, I've seen you, you know, from, for some of you for many, many years and how you've grown has been a, a complete joy to me to watch you flourish and, and take on new challenges. And for those of you who are newer, just to see you jump in and make a difference so quickly is just, it's, it's really, you know, what I take away is the people and, and what they've been able to do and what they've been able to accomplish. And if I played any role in that at all, I'm, I'm deeply, deeply privileged by, by that. Board, I want to thank you for the various levels of responsibility that you've entrusted me with over the years. I'm, I am truly humbled by that expression of faith. Your support of me, particularly during this last 16 months of complete, you know, insanity at some points, has meant the world to me, both professionally and personally. We use an expression in our family, crazy blessed. We are, we are absolutely crazy blessed as a family. And while I am totally ready for new challenges and new opportunities, I will miss my SBCUSD family dearly. And so I found a quote that, that I think sums it up pretty well. It's by one of the world's great, great, great philosophers. The quote is, how lucky I am to have something that makes saying goodbye so hard. And that is by none other than Winnie the Pooh. And so thank you to all of you and, and again, to the board particularly for letting me serve a community that I love and admire. I will continue to be the biggest cheerleader for San Bernardino City Unified School District. I love battling other districts and telling them, you know, how we, how we rock and, and how, you know, we, how we are so good. And I wish each and every one of you the richest blessings in the future. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And Madam President, we're going to close it strong with Chief Paulino. Chief?
All right, Chief, didn't mean to. He carries.
That's okay. Chief? I think he's on mute.
Yeah, Chief, there you go.
Hear me here?
Now, yes.
Well, Harold, congratulations on your retirement. As always, a blessing to be in the room with you. You know, Confucius says that when you're a warrior and you utilize time and patience, been in the room and when you've been at war to make sure that our kids get educated. So it's always a blessing to be in the room with those that make sure that they do the right things for our kids. And, and Harold, you know, said in Proverbs, say, I am because you are. And you've always rooted me on in terms of my work. I know every, every so often there's those that run from the popo, however, you've always stood beside us. And by the way, you have to make sure that you come back to run your leg to Baker to Vegas because I'm not running it. So you make sure that you come back. However, I'm, I'll leave you with this quote. You know, it says that it's too powerful warriors, which is patience and time. And you've utilized them effectively. As they say, I'm in warrior's land. Godspeed, my friend. And God bless you and keep you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're on mute, Doc.
That's, that's all the comments we have this evening.
All right. Thank you so much. And we are now going to move to 10.0. Am I right? Yeah. 10.0 consent items.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
And moved in second. Are there any?
Yes, I, I think, let me just to make sure, I think my son works. I just don't want to risk voting on it and not completely, completely sure for 10. Let's see here. It was for cyber tech. It was, my notes just disappeared on me. It was 11, 10.21 and 10.22.
Okay, so we're going to pull 1021 and 1022?
And I'm just going to abstain on that one.
All right. If there's no.
Madam, Madam President.
I'm listening.
10.68. I serve on the board of Community Hospital. There is no cost involved, but I don't know if I need to exclude myself from that or not.
Okay, so you will abstain from that one?
Okay, thank you.
Madam President.
Yes.
This is Scott. 10.41. I need to recuse. I am an employee of SBCSS.
Okay, 10.41. Are there any others to pull? All right. If not, we'll go ahead and vote on the remainder. Dr. Hill? Aye. Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios?
Aye.
And Dr. Doughty Rogers, aye. Motion carried. All right. We will now revisit 10.21. And this is where Ms. Rosales Medina will be abstaining?
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
All right. It's been moved in second. If there's no further discussion. Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios?
Aye.
And Dr. Doughty Rogers, aye. Motion carried. 10.22. Ms. Rosales Medina will be abstaining also from this one. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. It's been moved in second. If there's no discussion, then Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios?
Aye.
And Dr. Doughty Rogers, aye. Motion carried. 10.68. Dr. Hill will be abstaining from this one. Is there a motion?
So moved. Are you, second?
Okay, it's been moved in second. If there's no discussion. Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Doctor, or, or Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios?
Aye.
And Dr. Doughty Rogers, aye. Motion carried. And 10.41. Dr. Wyatt will be abstaining from this one. Is there?
Second.
All right. It's been moved in second. Thank you so much. Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios?
Aye.
And Dr. Doughty Rogers, aye. Motion carried. Thank you. We are now at 11.0 action items. 11.1 Personnel Report Number 21 dated June 22nd, 2021.
Present it, Board. So moved.
Second.
All right. It's been moved in second. If there's no further discussion. Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Thank you. Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios?
Aye.
And Dr. Doughty Rogers, aye. Motion carried. 11.2 Adoption of the 2021-2024 Local Control and Accountability Plan and Federal Addendum.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. If there is no discussion, I'll take the vote. Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios?
Aye.
Dr. Doughty Rogers, aye. Motion carried. 17.3 Approval of the School Plan for Student Achievement 2021-2022.
I'm going to recuse myself, Madam President.
Okay, Mr. Tillman is recusing himself. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And Mr. Tillman, you're recusing on 11.3?
No, 11.4. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So you're now, all right. I, I heard a, a second correct?
Yes, I did.
Yes.
Okay, all right. And if there is no other discussion, I'll go ahead and take the vote. Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios?
Aye.
And Dr. Doughty Rogers, aye. Motion carried. All right. This is 11.4 Approval of the Memorandum Understanding Between San Bernardino City Unified School District and Ballington Academy for the Arts of Science, Entrepreneurial High School, I Empire Academy, New Vision School, New, New Vision Middle School, Savant Preparatory Academy of Business and SOAR Charter Academy for Services. Is there a motion? Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second? Did I hear a second?
Second.
All right. It's been moved in second. And if there is no discussion, Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios?
Aye.
Dr. Doughty Rogers, aye. Motion carried. All right. 11.5 Approval of Mileage and Cell Phone Amounts Fiscal Year 2021-2022.
So moved.
Second.
It moved in second. If there's no discussion.
I do, I do, I do have, I have some questions here. So then, one of my questions is with regards to the mileage. Is this up to, or is this something that they would be receiving monthly? For instance, the fixed certificated mileage and the, well, actually all of them. Is that up to, or is that fixed?
For $45?
It says maximum. It says maximum.
So maximum. So it fluctuates for each one depending? Because it says right there, like for instance, the, the monthly amounts. So I'm just curious.
Medina, so this, this is, people have to submit their actual mileage. So it's, it's a max per month, but it's, it's not a flat rate. I mean, it's a flat rate to, to be reimbursed, but they don't get a certain amount. They have to submit. They have to submit. So, if they only travel three miles for the month, then that's all they are reimbursed for.
Oh, okay, so it's not like a monthly allowance? Okay, okay. And then the bottom one, which is a cell phone, is that also up? Or the maximum, or is that something, just to clarify on that one as well?
So, that is, they will get reimbursed up to a certain amount. They have to submit their paperwork to show what they pay, and then there's a max that they would get, and that would be monthly.
Okay. All right, sounds good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam President, can I follow up? Has anyone ever got reimbursed for seven thousand dollars?
So, Ms. Flores, I don't, Dr. Flores, I don't think anybody here knows that, but we can get that. I honestly doubt, I doubt that that is the case. Yeah, that would be.
And also, I would imagine that nobody has ever submitted up to thirteen thousand.
No, no, and this is, and this is, this is a, we do this every year, and our management submits the paperwork, so this is not a new policy.
Okay, because that would be outrageous. It would be a gift of public funds. So, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think that was my concern too, because, like, for instance, a cell phone, if had, you know, someone was to, that would be five hundred and eighty-three a month. So, how would anyone get to that point? But yeah, okay.
No, Abigail, it's seven thousand a month.
Oh, you know what? You're right.
Yeah.
I was dividing it by, for some reason, I was seeing it with yearly. Oh, my God. Is there some way where we can change that? Because that's just outrageous.
Yeah, that's ridiculous.
Yeah, for some reason, I was calculated by, you're right, it says monthly, but.
That would even be a lot annually.
It would. It would. So, is there a way we can adjust that just to, it doesn't make any sense why we still have that.
Madam President, let the district pull that item, and we will bring it back in July. I need to take a deeper look at it.
In hopes that it's a typo. Okay, so we're going to pull that one off?
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Irvin.
Yes, thank you.
All right, so we'll move to eleven point six Authorizing the Establishment of Fund Zero Six-Dash Student Activity Special Revenue Fund?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? If not, Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios?
Aye.
And Dr. Doughty Rogers, aye. Motion carried. Eleven point eight CalSTRS Exemption to Separation from Service Requirement in Glenn?
I think you forgot eleven point seven.
Did I skip? Oh, I did. I did. It went yellow on me. Okay, eleven point seven Resolution Authorizing the Superintendent to Apply for and Accept Grants From.
Madam President? Did you skip eleven point six? I didn't, I didn't catch that if you did. Eleven point six.
Okay, something I just pulled. Wait, hold on. I pulled one, and then I thought.
Eleven point five. And then eleven point.
Special Fund. I did Zero Six Student Activities Special Revenue Fund?
We did that one.
I did.
Yes.
I apologize. I missed that one. Sorry.
No, and that's why it went back to yellow, and I thought I was back on there. Okay, so now let's move to the next one. Okay, eleven point seven Resolution Authorizing the Superintendent to Apply for and Accept Grants for.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? If not, Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios?
Aye.
And Dr. Doughty Rogers, aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, now eleven point eight CalSTRS Exemption to the Separation from Service Requirement in Glenn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? If not, Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios?
Aye.
And Dr. Doughty Rogers, aye. All right, motion carried. Eleven point nine CalSTRS Exemption to the Separation from Service Requirement K-NIC-B-NIC.
So moved.
Second. Give it to Margaret.
All right, it's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? If not, I will take the vote. Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios?
Aye.
And Dr. Doughty Rogers, aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Eleven point ten Adoption of the Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-One, Twenty Twenty-Two Budget?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. If there's no discussion?
A discussion. Discussion. I couldn't find where we have, I know we got money, SR money for paraprofessionals to help our teachers. Does somebody know where that is, or can they tell me how much it is that we have allocated for our paraprofessionals, our instructional?
It is an SR to Dr. Flores, but I don't know the exact amount. Oh, Harold saw it on here.
So, so the amount is three point eight million dollars, and it's actually located in the budget packet under assumptions on page twenty, where it outlines those dollars.
Okay, so that three point eight covers the current professional, I mean, paraprofessionals or additional paraprofessionals?
So, there, great question. So, there's flexibility in the use of those dollars. And so, it could cover additional new paraprofessionals, additional time for existing paraprofessionals, or it could cover existing paraprofessional costs.
Okay, so there's flexibility. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, I'll go ahead and take the vote. Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios?
Aye.
And Dr. Doughty Rogers, aye. Motion carried. Eleven point eleven Public Disclosure of Proposed SBTA Bargaining Agreement?
So moved.
All right. Did I hear a second? It moved in second. Is there any discussion? If not, I will take the vote. Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios? And Dr. Doughty Rogers, aye. Motion carried. Eleven point twelve Signature Authority Associate Superintendent?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? If not, I'll take the vote. Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios? And Dr. Doughty Rogers, aye. Motion carried. Thank you. We are now at twelve point oh Summary of Board Members' Requests. Twelve point one Review of Requests. And Mrs. Ontiveros, I think you are up.
I am. Thank you so much, Dr. Rogers. So, I did capture a few requests for you tonight. There were also several that were answered on the spot. So, I know that early on, Dr. Flores asked about confirming, how we were confirming that everybody was following our safety protocols, and Dr. Funches answered that for you. You also then asked about our air purifiers and replacement filters, which Mr. Precy answered. Mr. Tillman then asked what we were doing about missing or lost furniture and how we were cleaning furniture before we were returning it to the classroom, and recommended that we add some days for teachers to get back into their classrooms in order to see what was there. Mr. Tillman also asked about whether we would be using one-time monies to hire substitutes in order to help with class sizes and support students. And Dr. Funches said that he would be responding to that. And then followed up on that. Mr. Tillman asked that we would encourage everybody to grasp the magnitude of the one-time dollars that were coming our way in order to help students. Dr. Flores and Dr. Rogers both asked about whether we could review or bring forward the busing policy to consider revising that in order to meet student needs. And then Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina and Dr. Flores asked questions about item eleven point five, specifically about the limits on our mileage and cell phones allowances. And Mr. Irvin said that we would pull that item and bring it back in July. So, those were the only questions that I had for you tonight that were not answered. So, I know that we, that Dr. Flores also asked about the paraprofessionals, which Mr. Solins answered, so.